The city of Southfield, we have a meeting for Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, at seven p.m. and of course, we're going to follow along.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Fiverr?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison is not present with the meeting and Mr. Fraser is with us, he is with the meeting. Mr. Fracassi?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
You have five members present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the request, under Communications, a request for recognition, Ms. Towne-Liddell. And you have, I need to name an address for the record. And you have five minutes after that.
Good evening, everyone. Councilwoman. Pamela Gerald, I live in the city of Southfield, but I use my post office box to keep the Southfield Post Office open. My post office box is P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven, dash, zero one five five. I have been calling and reaching out to entities to see what the people can do to help our public safety. I am literally outraged and so disappointed that we have money that was given to us in the form of a SAFER grant that we have yet to accept. So myself and about fifteen other residents, we're in the process of forming a community coalition to see if we can, since the city administration is afraid to do it, if we can, without being unethical or breaking the law, go to different businesses to see if we can fundraise and try to fundraise three million dollars. We want to give our fire department two point two million dollars and give the rest to our verified police department. I just wanted to talk again about the standards because it was, again, touted to me that the Southfield standard is somewhat like a journey. So let's see if I can make this a very pleasant journey. We have a code enforcement department and that code enforcement department, I thought, went over and above the call of duty in a very negative way by being able to see a hundred and sixty-five feet from the street up someone's driveway to say that they had a flat tire when it was really a slow leak in the tire. I don't think anybody filed a lawsuit against them for code enforcement violations, but the most funny and ironic thing was that the city kept putting this case off, starting in July, up until here recently, giving this gentleman a chance to correct the code enforcement violations. And out of twelve violations, having commercial vehicles in a residential area, rodents, large equipment, I don't know, something about the trees, you can look it up, it's, I think it's Carr versus the city of Southfield. Twelve violations, this gentleman paid a hundred dollars. Now, we needed a millage to stay out of receivership. That's a way to generate funds creatively. Why wasn't he charged a hundred dollars per offense? And why did the city's legal department keep putting off the case and putting off the case until this gentleman got it pretty much together? I think it's just sad. And Ms. English, I'm glad you came, I want to thank you for reaching out, calling me. I hope that the conversation was a good conversation, but I really appreciate you reaching out, trying to find out what's going on in reference to myself and the council. So thank you very much, Ms. English. But I'm just trying to figure out why we did this for this gentleman and there are other residents that are getting five hundred dollar code enforcement tickets for being parked three inches with a boat past the required distance. I'm just hoping that with the new council, or relatively new council, working with this administration, that we really establish a standard, that we do a mission statement to reflect this standard and stop touting something that we don't really have. There is so much going on in this city that's improper. Some things are going to be coming up since everybody is doing checking and looking into things, so are the residents. And I'm just really hoping, the new people coming to council, that you pay attention to the residents, that you respect the residents, that you establish a fair decorum and that people are given the right to speak without the intimidation, as Ms. English alluded to, the harassment, and that we stop abusing our police power by having them at these meetings where there's no threat, but that you should have these police out on the streets because we've got a lot of things going on out in the streets. Oh, when you put up the one finger, I thought it was one minute.
No, I wanted to get your attention. Your time is, your time is up.
Oh, oh, I thought you were telling me I had one minute. Thank you so much and I'll be back.
All right, next item on the agenda is the authorization of purchasing the modern data computers.
Yes, through the chair. We removed this item from the agenda on October twenty-fourth at my request for further research in that we wanted to detail the various elements of the cost so that we wouldn't have a mistake in understanding as to how much the hardware, the computer itself, actually costs versus the other pieces that were involved and other mechanical devices and other work that was involved. So I'd like to have Ray Townsell just brief this, both teams, the detailed list of the computer and the various elements that we have to push aside. Oh, Eric, okay, both of you, please. Yeah, they both worked on it and, so, this is their police item, so we have the whole team here, so that's it. So with that, we're talking about the various elements in the computer itself, plus the installation and all the other steps, so.
Okay, I'll start off. Good evening. Good morning. I will start off to talk about the procurement part of the process and then I will defer to Acting Two Hawkins to give a little bit more detail on the technical aspects of it. We've used the Oakland County contract, as we do for many other things, vehicles, gasoline, that sort of thing, to get prices on these computers. As indicated in the, I guess, tab sheet, for lack of a better word, we feel that the pricing is very competitive. The county makes the pricing available to jurisdictions within the county and quite frankly, all over the state. This year, we're recommending using Dell. Dell is our current platform for the desktops that we use around City Hall, as well as the servers, which is the backbone for the entire network. And then I will let Eric speak to me about the technical aspects.
Thank you, Ms. Townell. And good evening, council, Madam Mayor, city officials and members of the public. Again, good evening. Again, my name is Eric Hawkins and I'm one of the acting chiefs in the police department. And we're here this, I'm here this evening to request authorization to purchase sixty end-car mobile data computers, or MDCs. And MDCs are basically fixed computers in our road patrol vehicles. And the officers receive all of their dispatch runs over these MDCs. They use the MDCs to check persons, to check vehicles. They use the MDCs to communicate, both inside and outside the police department. Essentially, because of how the technology has evolved with MDCs over the years, they have become, they have allowed for a level of productivity and efficiency that was simply unheard of just a decade ago in law enforcement. We last purchased MDCs in two thousand and seven. The technology has become obsolete. The technology in our current MDCs is about five years old. They are no longer under warranty, so any replacement costs are an extra expense for the city of Southfield. The technology in our current MDCs is unable to handle the new applications that we have in law enforcement. There's a thirty-minute boot-up time in our current MDC, so there's a delay with our officers when they start their shift or during times when they have to, when they, when they have, when they have reports or when they have meetings or something like that, where they have to be out of their cars. It takes a while to get started again. As Ms. Townell alluded to, our proposed replacement is the Dell Latitude. Council gave authorization for the purchase in the two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve budget. It's the latest technology. These new computers have a five-year accidental replacement warranty, no questions asked. Ms. Townell talked about the bidding process through the Oakland County Co- purchasing program. Eight companies bid it for this project. The computer that we chose, the evaluations for this computer, the cumulative evaluation far exceeded any of the other companies that bid on this project. The technology compartment, the department in the city of, in the city of Southfield, Public Works and the Purchasing Department are all in concurrence with this, with this project. The price for this project is almost ninety thousand dollars less than what we paid four years ago for MDC. It's almost ninety-eight thousand dollars less than what we were budgeted for this fiscal So I request authorization to purchase the sixty mobile data computers and I could take , or Ray Townell, either one of us can take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Fiverr?
To either Ray or, uh, acting chief. The existing computers, are they salvageable? Can we make my own solid? Maybe recycle, in other words?
I don't believe they can be used within the organization, if that was your question, but we always like to have the opportunity to auction this equipment and if it's not auctionable, then we would dispose of it properly. Because it's electronic.
Because there are companies that buy them just for the metal alone?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So. I typically work with the technology department to make sure that, you know, the hard lives and any sensitive information is wise and if there is any value after that, then we can sell them.
Well, that would obviously reduce the cost.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I think the key element here is that the computer itself is about sixty percent of the total cost and I think we just gave a little bit more detail now so that, so that the reader would understand all of the other elements that are involved. Come to the total average cost of thirty-five hundred, the computer itself is two thousand oh seventy-seven.
Yes.
With that, I'd like to put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth as a consent.
Okay.
And then including installation of these computers as well?
Yes, yes, it does.
And how many, how many out of the built police cars do we have on the street at one time?
I'm sorry, we have a question.
How many cars do we have on the street at one time?
I would say we probably have anywhere from ten to fifteen cars, probably, somewhere around ten to fifteen cars on the road at any given time.
How do you arrive at sixty needed?
That covers it.
That we presently have? Do we presently have sixty of the old ones in our vehicles?
Um, yes, and we have sixty vehicles in our fleet that can accommodate mobile data computers.
Well, that wasn't the question. Well, that's not the answer. Ask it again. How many?
How many cars do you have on the road? That's what I said. One time.
Well, how many computers?
Yeah.
One.
What, one computer in each car?
Yeah.
No, I know that. How many cars is it, sixty?
Correct.
Sixty in those, yeah.
Six dollars.
In the tour, yeah. Okay. That's on the, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to ask, Mayor? Excuse me. How long is the training and does the council provide the training for the officers?
They, they provide us with ongoing training and support throughout the five years that we have of the contract.
And that's part of the.
And that's part of the contract.
And that's part of this, right?
No, no, it's not. You're welcome.
And this will go on the consent notice on the, for the next meeting?
Yes, for the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am through the Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve and Center update. Mr. Fracassi, would you give a report on the finance committee?
We had two meetings on, uh.
Can you hand them out?
Sure. Yeah, two meetings. The finance committee, it was October twentieth, is an introductory discussion and the staff was asked to bring back more specifics for a subsequent discussion. Following major points that came up in the, in the discussion, number one was the exhibit show consistent council support of this. Yeah, I found the document, Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve Nature contributor, Senator Timeline and, you know, there's, does anybody have a copy of the forty-three items? Yeah. So it kind of follows the history of not only.
We don't have, we don't have copies of that.
Where did I dig that up?
Oh, not the forty-three, I thought you know.
No.
We have a minute.
It goes back to day one, if you want to record a copy.
Yeah, yeah, could we do that, please, because that's very important, Nancy.
It's really.
I'm sorry, I, I have a file on, I have a file on this up and, and I guess I was reading it all together and, you know, it was in this packet or one previously handed out. Anyways, you'll make copies of it and we'll distribute it. Anyway, the exhibit show consistent council's support for the project for a four and a half year period, from March twenty-seventh, two thousand and six, to approval of the site plan, to August twenty-third, two thousand and ten. The question really is, is when do we construct, now or later? And the other point was, the key point expressed for construction now, where, that on the negative side, we lose about five hundred thousand dollars one time in the NDR grant, plus two hundred and ninety thousand in other grants and donation monies, which would be mounting to about thirty-eight percent of the total budget. And likely future construction costs increases and budgetary effects, P&amp;R limited in the first five years of financing was available. Totally, I think, what they're really saying is, in that case, we were talking about at the table, was the, the grant money is going to be, if we don't act in the manner in which we had made approvals, to go forward. There were time slots in which the grant would, would be, uh, not extended and, and that's that five hundred thousand dollar grant. The agency which gave the five hundred thousand dollars would be non-existent, as I understand, on an existing administration, so that money would probably be, not be available anytime in the future. The economic pressures, of course, the tax base decline and other priorities of Parks and Recreation were raised at the meeting. Whether we have employees needed, do we have two hundred employees which are through attrition not performing today in the city? And there was some discussion about why should we go forward with this nature study building when we still have open spots, not open spots, but needs in, in different areas of the city. And this may be a public concern, we just went for a millage and it was a concern that, why are we spending this money presently for this building when, when our needs seem to be needed in other areas, not taking into consideration Parks and Recreation and library funds are separate from the city's funds? We have spent two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars so far for engineering fees to date and this, this would not be lost unless we go do the project. Thanks, Nancy. It got, it got pretty in-depth talking to the acting director of Parks and Rec. We really in-depth went into it. Ms. Taylor and Seymour and I were asking the questions and individuals whether or not we went forward, whether or not they could afford to do so, knowing that it was strain on all departments, we're back and forth. And we decided, I decided not to take a vote of the three individuals that sit on the finance committee, but to send it to the full council because of the nature of the discussion and the pros and cons of it. This is now before you this, this evening. The council finance committee, as it stated, did not make a recommendation, but is seeking some of the discussion and thoughts of council as a whole. This forty-three points tells you how long we've been working on this project and there's minutes attached to the agenda that show all the steps of the way where the council approved this facility and, like I say, I go through all these documents I have way back and then I found this great late report, which goes back to two thousand and nine and I'll pass it around, but it's, the big story is on Carpenter Lake and, and I was surprised, although it's in there, is that the future plans for Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve include the addition of a new nature center that will be constructed beginning in two thousand and eleven. And so it's not a new thing, it's been on the table for quite a while. The center will add an important educational component to the preserve, the Carpenter Lake Nature Center will be a LEED certified structure using green, sustainable architectural design and construction techniques, hands-on displays to educate the public about local flora and fauna, as well as substantial architecture, sustainable architecture will be showcased. The center will provide nature-based programming for the community, schools and other groups. So, so this has been on the, on the board for some time and, and like I said, after the second meeting of the finance committee, we thought it'd be best that we brought it for a full council for further consideration. Thank you, Mr. Fracassi. Before I head.
Yes. Through the chair, honorable counsel and mayor, city clerk and numerous guests and interested parties, I appreciate the opportunity to, to state some of the facts here. Put together a package, the reason that I'm before you is that it's my job to provide information for the honorable body to make decisions based on all the factors involved and upon solid research. What you have in your packet is really the background of the, of the center, the proposed center since its inception in terms of it being a, a site plan. I think possibly that I would like to just go through this letter real quickly and then I would like to, if, the, the big decision, as Councilman Fracassi had indicated, is basically timing. Should we begin the construction immediately or should we defer this project? One of the things I'd like to bring to your attention is in the packet, there's an exhibit C, so about five or six pages in. And what exhibit C says, is this is from the Department of Natural Resources, and it says that we would, it says, please complete both copies of this amendment, which is an amendment to, to obtain an extension of this grant. And it says, we need a copy, we need this copy in our hands by November twenty-third. That's the reason we indicate that time is of the essence. And it says, due to the length of time since the award of this grant, no further extensions will be granted. A final reimbursement request should be submitted by August first, two thousand and twelve. What that means is that this project, if we were, if we were to remain eligible for these grant funds, would have to be completed by August first. So it's a very tight, it would be a very tight construction process and so we're bringing it to council. If the decision is to move forward, then we would need to act very aggressively and it would require, a request for immediate need to act so that we could get this form into the granting agency, the Department of Natural Resources, State of Michigan, by the twenty-third. By way of background, the Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve, which was open to the public in October two thousand and eight, reflects more than two decades of property acquisition and complex site development, as the Councilman Fracassi's list indicates that he handed out. Provides a context for the development of the Carpenter Lake Nature Center Interpretive Center project. On March twenty-seventh, two thousand and six, council unanimously approved authorization, which would be exhibit A in the packet, to apply for the five hundred thousand dollar Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant for the Carpenter Lake Nature Center project. The grant was unanimously approved for acceptance on October twenty-second, two thousand and seven, which would be exhibit B in your packet, with a city commitment of five hundred thousand dollars in matching funds and a further commitment that the city of Southfield is required by the granting agency, quote, "shall appropriate all funds necessary to complete the project during the project period." The resolution also placed the project under simple tening control of the Southfield Building Authority. Subsequently, the city applied for and received two extensions on this grant while completing the nature preserve itself and researching the concept for the nature interpretive center. The third extension is now pending and exhibit C, as we indicated, just reviewed, contains the following additional caveats or requirements, it's all for the granting agency, talks about the, the, no further extensions and the, and DNR's fiscal year and the state's fiscal year. September thirty, the funds would lapse at that time and so the requirement is to complete the project by August first to ensure the five hundred thousand grand reimbursement. The project's architect, Harley Ellis Deveraux, of Southfield, Michigan, indicates that this can be accomplished if the bidding process can begin immediately, like tomorrow. Close to it, right? Or sooner. Our acceptance of this final extension agreement must be submitted by November twenty-third, as indicated. On March twenty-second, two thousand and ten, at the conclusion of a detailed presentation by Parks and Recreation staff, the director and the land slip architect, accompanied by Art Smith from the architectural firm Harley Ellis Deveraux, council consensus was reached directing city staff to move forward with Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center project, which would be exhibit D in your packet. On July nineteenth, two thousand and ten, council approved the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar adjustment to the two thousand and ten, eleven Parks and Recreation budget, which when added to previous budgeted funds for this purposes, purpose, allowed, allotted a total of three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for a variety of architectural engineering services, including soil boring, testing, analysis, topographic surveys, wetlands permitting, additional permitting and bid process activities, design engineering, exterior, interior and site, construction documents. site, construction documents, and site plan review process preparation. Uh, in participation, all these, uh, services are outlined in exhibit E. The council communication also set, set the project total budget at two point one million dollars. Also, on July nineteenth, council authorized submission of a two hundred thousand dollar EPA grant application for the nature center project, which is exhibit E in the packet. We have verbal confirmation from the EPA that the hundred, that a hundred and forty thousand dollars was awarded of the two hundred requested, and we fully anticipate, uh, formal communication of the award, uh, by the end of this month. Uh, on August twenty-third, two thousand and ten, the committee had a whole discussion regarding the special use and site plan review request for the Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center concluded with the consensus that the matter be brought before council for formal consideration of approval at the regular meeting scheduled for that same evening. The special use and site plan motion passed unanimously, that would be exhibit F in your packet. Uh, under the fiscal impact portion of this transmittal letter, I'd like to bring to your attention the following detail. Uh, the budget, as we indicated for the project, is not to exceed two point one million dollars, of which one point one two two million, or fifty-three point four percent, is already funded. This leaves a balance of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand yet to be provided, and the detail is outlined in, uh, the transmittal letter. Uh, two point one million project costs less the following items: grants, donations, and previously funded items, one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars would be, uh, uh, five hundred thousand M D N R grant, a hundred and forty thousand dollar EPA grant, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation received from Denso, and three hundred and thirty-two thousand in architect, engineering services, and related site costs previously budgeted in the Parks and Recreation fiscal oh-nine, ten budget and ten eleven budget, leaving nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand yet to be provided, should council decide to move forward at this time on the project. Uh, the original financing assumption is outlined in the July nineteenth, two thousand and ten transmittal letter included in exhibit E was to front-load the entire project out of the Parks and Recreation fund balance. Although the Parks and Rec fund balance was at a very healthy level at June thirty, two thousand and ten, five point nine three million, or eighty-one percent of the subsequent year's budget of seven point three four million, Parks and Recreation faces, faces substantial future capital project and operating challenges. That is one of the items that came up, uh, in the finance committee, uh, discussion. Uh, further, we need to keep in mind that Parks and Recreation received only a minimum mill increase of point oh nine seven six, uh, going from one point six five two four mills to one point seven five mills in two oh eleven twelve, from the millage election of May third, two thousand and eleven. This produces, uh, two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three new dollars in two thousand and eleven, twelve, or even less in any future years of declining tax base. Even with these new dollars, the net effect of the thirteen point oh two percent decline in the, uh, two thousand and eleven, twelve tax base produced an overall decline of three hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars in total Parks and Recreation tax revenues from two thousand and ten, eleven, to two thousand and eleven, twelve. This leads to the conclusion that the Parks and Recreation fund balance should not be used to front-load the nature center project. The fund balance should be left intact to serve as a buffer to provide adequate resources to meet primary Parks and Rec capital needs, while the department simultaneously works to reconfigure its operations to meet the revenue restrictions of the future. So, again, should council decide to move forward on this at this time, uh, we would recommend not using the Parks and Recreation fund balance to front-load the project. Accordingly, it's recommended that the nature center project be financed by advancing project costs from the local improvement revolving fund as they are incurred. The local improvement revolving fund is an internal service fund that exists solely as a quote, and this is a quote from the annual audit, comprehensive annual financial report, as a means for the, for the internal financing of public improvements, in other words, capital projects. This fund had a balance of, uh, of over seven million dollars at June thirty, two thousand and ten. This, this amount is unlikely to change significantly, uh, in the audit of the fiscal year, uh, ended twenty, uh, in two thousand and eleven, June thirty, which is currently underway. Under this contract, grant reimbursements and donations received would, uh, go to LRF, serving to limit the overall remaining capital project costs to be absorbed by P and R to no more than nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So, nine seventy-eight is the optimum or the maximum that this project could cost Parks and Recreation, uh, to be financed over a number of years. The nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar responsibility of P and R would be amortized over fifteen years with interest-only payments at three percent per annum for the first five years, beginning in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, thirteen. Thus, there would be no immediate new costs to Parks and Recreation in the current fiscal year for the Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center project to move forward under the required expedited construction format. The amortization schedule is enclosed as exhibit G in your packet. To illustrate, uh, the total first year cost to Parks and Recreation, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, would be, and I have recommended, again, if council wants to go forward, I have a, a recommended resolution which could fine-tune this a bit, uh, even further reducing the cost to, to Parks and Recreation. Uh, the total first year cost to Parks and Recreation would be twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars of interest to the local improvement revolving fund, and seventy-five thousand dollars for operations of the nature center. This estimated annual amount for operations is based on consultation with the project architect concerning utilities and other fixed costs, combined with reasonable assumptions concerning staffing of the facility. It is cautious, as it does not take into account any revenues that might result, result from memberships, day camps, classes, rentals, or special events. Uh, the goals impacted that we have is our ongoing goals. There are six of them, financially sound, with sustainable, top quality, et cetera, as listed here. We have pulled out, for special emphasis, a live city to enjoy and have fun, and preferred place to make home. A recommendation, uh, in reviewing the consistent history of previous actions in support of the Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Project, it is clear that city council certainly wishes to achieve the objective as outlined in unanimously passed site plan for the project. As we say, this amounts to a matter of timing as to when. However, concerns about Parks and Recreation, future financial challenges did arise in the preliminary discussions of this matter on October twentieth of the finance committee, and the proposed financial plan outlined in this communication addresses those legitimate concerns by leaving the P and R fund balance untouched for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve relative to this project, and by charging interest only on the nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand residual capital cost. This proposed financial plan was reviewed in detail, as indicated by the council chairman of finance committee, Donald McCassie, on November tenth. Uh, council approval of the proposed resolution, uh, should council want to move forward on this, uh, what we're saying is, if council wants to do this now, this is the best way to do it. This is the best way to finance it. Uh, it's, uh, uh, cost-effective to all of the funds that are involved, and does not require us to go outside the city, uh, to finance this, this project. What I would like to do is I would like to have this recommended resolution around which kind of fine-tunes, uh, some of the items, and gives a little bit more relief to the Parks and Recreation fund. And again, this is, uh, this is, this only really takes, would take effect if council decision is, uh, to move forward with the project at this time. Um, so, what this does is it would modify exhibit G, which is the last piece of paper in your large packet, and that is the amortization schedule. Um, okay, so the resolution, uh, you know, let's see if we can try and stay away from so many numbers in mind as we bottle at this point. Okay, resolved, now this is what, this is what we would have to agree to do if the decision is to move forward now. If the decision is to defer, then obviously this resolution would, would hold. Uh, resolved that city council authorized the city staff to complete the process as required by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, M D N R, to secure the extension of the approved five hundred thousand dollar grant identified as T F oh six dash oh six four Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center under the terms set forth in the M D N R letter of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, copy of said letter being attached to this resolution. And be it further resolved that the local improvement revolving fund will advance fund the project, meeting project payment requirements as they incur, are incurred, up to the not-to-exceed project cost of two point one million dollars, and I might add, this will not go one penny over. No way. Right?
Right.
Thank you very much. Uh, be it further resolved that the remaining Parks and Recreation responsibility for the capital project cost for the Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center project, and the not-to-exceed amount of nine hundred and eighty thousand is to be reimbursed by Parks and Recreation to the local improvement revolving fund under the terms of the amortization schedule, which is attached to this resolution and provides for annual interest-only payments at three percent per annum, beginning in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, thirteen. And, and you will notice on the amortization schedule for the first five years, from two thousand and twelve, thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, the costs to the Parks and Recreation will be twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty thousand, uh, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars each year for the first five years, and as originally proposed, also, they would have to cover the seventy-five thousand in operating costs. What I have done in the next two, uh, items, uh, next two, uh, resolved elements that have a line next to them, is I've, again, listening to the finance committee's, uh, concerns about Parks and Recreation, the fact that a lot of work needs to be done there on, on capital issues, I, I went back to work to say, how can, again, the decision were to move forward, how would we design this to make it even, even less of a burden to Parks and Recreation? So, what I did is I took a look at the existing debt that they have, and they, they have internal debt only, uh, no other outside fund issues. Be it further resolved that the interest rate on the existing LRF loan for the Carpenter Lake Restoration Project, this is what I'm suggesting. The restoration project is the hole, dredging, the dam, everything they've done so far. There was a loan for that. That was back in two thousand and six, it was a local improvement revolving fund loan, and it was, uh, I think it's nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and it has a six percent interest rate on it. In this rate, interest rate environment, I think it's appropriate to reduce that interest charge. But don't forget, it's one, one piece of the city loaning to another. I think it's appropriate to reduce that to three percent. Uh, that's what the current loan recommendation would be, uh, so I think that we need to restructure that to, from six percent to three percent, which will provide, which would provide two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and one dollars and thirteen cents in reduced interest charges to Parks and Recreation, an amount equivalent to three point eight years of operating costs of the Carpenter Lake Interpretive Center. What that means is, for the first, the round number's four years, the cost to Parks and Recreation would be twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars. That's it. Because they will, they will, they will, by getting this other loan reduced in terms of its obligation, uh, that will take care of the seventy-five thousand dollar annual operating cost. I might add, uh, where the seventy-five thousand came from, uh, it comes from four part-time people, uh, and, uh, a side, uh, the re relocating Ms. Carlock to spend considerable time over theirs as required, she's already on payroll, uh, and also, we have an allotment which we consider high-side of twenty thousand dollars for utilities, and that was, uh, worked out with consultation with the architectural firm, and we wanted to make sure that, um, we were, we did not understate these costs. In fact, I think there's a considerable buffer in there, uh, and, uh, so I don't think we'll really come to seventy-five, but, uh, we don't, we don't take chances on, on estimates like that, because you don't know where utilities are going. Okay, the second, the second new portion that I'm recommending, and again, if council decides to move forward now, would be that the site plan for Carpenter Lake Nature Interpretive Center be extended up for a one-year period through August twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. Our city attorney, Pro, reminded me that, that, um, uh, site plans do have an ending term, uh, if they're not exercised, and so we need to do this extension, and this is the appropriate way to do it. I've, I've had, uh, a, a discussion with legal as to the language, is the proper way to do it, and the proper place to do it. And then be it finally resolved that city staff, the Harley Ellis Deveraux Architectural Firm, of Southfield, Michigan, and the Southfield Building Authority are hereby authorized to initiate the bid process immediately. Periodic pro, project progress reports to be provided to city council. Uh, at this point, I think the most help I could be is questions and answers, uh, on this, I'd be glad to answer whatever questions, and this really is a council discussion about, um, when, when, when we think we should move forward on this. There's, there's, there's universal, um, support for the project itself, it's not the issue. The issue is now or later, for the months. So, with that, uh, if I could help with questions and answers, uh, would be glad to. Otherwise, uh, be glad to take a seat, yes?
Mr. Schrute?
We do, uh, just cover the, uh, different allocation of funds under the charter that go to the city, the library, and the Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
To clarify that, uh, they have millage under the charter which goes directly to them.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Thank you for asking. Uh, Parks and Recreation has its own separate millage, and so you cannot use Parks and Recreation dollars, say, for, um, any, any administrative purpose, uh, or any other general operating purposes of the general fund. That money is for Parks and Recreation, that's how it was passed. Uh, if you, if you ask, uh, city attorney, Barry, see, they'll tell you that, that, that's how it's intended to be set up, and that they, and that their fund, that, that, that fund is for Parks and Recreation purposes. Same with the library. Uh, many cities just have it all in one, you know, they may have just one, uh, operating millage, and then each year they have to portion them on the various areas, but, uh, we, we, we had separate millage elections, and just like the library, we provided a certain amount of millage. That's, uh, how it is with Parks and Recreation as well.
Is that all, Mr. President?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Sitting here listening to you, sounds good. Very good. But not now. I think we should put a hold on this for a little while, until the economics turn better, they're getting worse, and we're going to spend tons of money to build a nature preserve in the forest.
Wow. Is this, this nature project, isn't this part of the Parks and Rec, supporting?
Yes, yes, it is.
So, so the money is there?
No.
Or not there?
No, the, here's, here's.
You don't spend money on that?
Here was, here was the decision, okay?
Whose decision?
The recommendation. The decision is whether to go for it now or later, okay? Parks and Recreation has a fund balance, it's identified in here, as of last audit, nearly six million dollars, okay? However, they have lots of other capital projects that they need to do, this came out, finance committee, with some concerns that were expressed there. Furthermore, uh, they, the Parks and Recreation received very little in the new millage, just a little heavily override, okay, just a fraction of a, of a percent, two hundred and some thousand dollars. So, we, we have to take some time to really get So, we, we have to take some time to really get into their situation, and make some, make some recommendations about going forward, about capital, about some of their programs, golf course issues, and numerous other, other, other issues, so, so, uh, it would be, if we go forward with this, this is the financing plan, it would be my recommendation that we leave the fund balance alone for now, and that we do an internal loan from the local improvement revolving fund, which is money that's set aside for capital projects, such as, example, if out there we had a sinkhole tomorrow, okay, we have collapsed on Evergreen Road, we would go to that money, we would say, to the road fund, we're going to loan you so many dollars to go handle this. So, that's what the money's for, it's for capital projects, and if, again, council decides to move forward now, I, I think the best, the most cautious thing to do is to leave the fund balance alone in Parks and Recreation, that's outlined in, in the letter.
Can I, if you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead. Um, my intuition tells me, not now, the Parks and Rec has this six million dollars you're talking about.
That's as of last audit, so we don't have this year's results in yet, they have you some fund balance this year, we know, but again, we don't have a lot of figures.
What should the people outside say, if you're going ahead of a project like this, and we're down nine firemen, we're down eleven police, or vice versa, how can you, uh, how can you recommend?
I'm not recommending going forward, that's a council decision.
Well, okay.
Okay, this is a financial plan, if the decision of council is to move forward, I think this is the best way to do it.
So how can, how, in all change of wording, how can council go ahead when there's such need out there to the people, and this nature preserve in the forest, what does that do to the people, protect them? I mean, it's not easy.
It's why we're here, yeah, for, for all these, uh, concerns.
But this guy in uniform protects the people.
Absolutely.
The fire, the police protect the people.
Absolutely, but you can't use this money to fire poli- to hire police or firefighters.
Well, then don't use it for anything else until we're able to, to correct the issue here.
That's fine, except that, all I'm saying is, if council wishes, as they have stated, for four and a half years consistently, they wanted to do this, I know things change, okay, that's prerogative of council, what I am saying is, if council wishes to go forth with this site plan, this is the best way to do it.
Okay, I understand that.
If council doesn't wish to go forth with the site plan, well, we may know.
The priorities then, the priorities then is different than today.
So, priorities one years ago are different than now, that's fair to say.
Jim, you're bucking me, hello? I personally don't think we should do this, spend this money now, just to put it on hold, do it maybe in the near future, soon as then later, when things get a little bit better, but how would it look, we just had a millage, and we're going to spend, I don't know, that's enough of dollars.
Nine hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars.
That's about two million dollars.
That's right.
We, from our own funds, right?
From our own funds.
Is that going to pay for how many firemen and how many police?
Can't use this money for firemen or police.
Well, all you could do is change the rule, and, and, change the charter, change the charter, do whatever you want, but.
But, your, your concerns are about how something looks, and that's a, and that is a legitimate concern to put on the table.
All right.
Absolutely.
That's what, that's what my concern is, you're going to always change the rule or law to protect the people out there at risk. A shack, a shack in the forest is not going to protect the people, it's going to protect, maybe, protect the animals from the rain or something, maybe, but I, I'm not going there for it, personally.
Okay, can I just ask to the chair, if there's, if there's questions and answers about the technical, uh, I'd be glad to, to stay up here and handle other ones, if I'd like to have, seek them, I could.
Uh, I think, I think the thing that needs this thing may be overlooked, is that money is available, but will be lost, in addition to what, Mr. Scherr, what, Mr. Scherr doesn't know, Don, go ahead, let me, let me, uh, uh, I guess, I hear you, Mr. Lance, and that was some of the discussion that we had, uh, at the finance committee.
The best comment, and.
But, yeah, but let me finish by saying, uh, when you weigh, when you weigh the entire, um, manner in which council approved this project as it went forward.
That's passed.
It's just, well, when you, when you, when you try to build something over a period of time, council has to make approvals to go forward, council made all those approvals to go forward, and, and now we are, we extended the grant money to five hundred thousand, we extended that to the final now extension, so, so what you're, you're really saying is, that, uh, excepting for the, uh, architectural fee of three hundred and thirty two thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy five thousand has already been spent, right? The project cost is two million, one hundred thousand dollars, but the loss that we're looking at, the loss is one million, one hundred and twenty two thousand dollars that we will lose by not going forward. That's, that's the amount of money that we get through grants, donations, big refunded items, uh, the E P A grant, a hundred and forty thousand, uh, dental gears, a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, there's, all these, all these funds amount to one million, one hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, so, if you do not go forward, and, and I must say this again, this money can only be spent in Parks and Recreation. There's, there's, there's no reason to mention that it can't be, it could be possibly used somewhere else in the organization, but it cannot be diverted from the Parks and Recreation to any other department, like police and fighter, public safety. So, so what I'm saying is, you're, you're absolutely right, that, that there is vacancies, there's two hundred vacancies in, in, uh, in, in the system itself, presently. Uh, what we brought up in the meeting was that, you know, we don't have a police chief, we don't have a fire chief, we don't have a building department deputy, uh, director, we don't have, uh, a Parks and Recreation director, we have a lot of acting personnel to run this operation, but the feeling strongly was, and I, and I give both sides of it, for, for this thing was, it costs a million dollars to do one mile of asphalt road, one million dollars. If you had to make the determination to, to do one mile of asphalt road, or complete something that we have been building on, and save a million, one hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, and spend nine hundred and seventy eight out of the Parks and Recreation funds, that the value to the community, the value to the community would be excessive, it would be great, because whether you're a nature lover or not, you know, there's things that a city has to do to stay competitive today, and you just can't, like, for example, close libraries, close Parks and Rec, you know, we start closing down shop because of the finance, and what you have to do is to con- continue to build, but to do it in a manner in which you're staying fiscal sound, and that we're doing, there's no, at this time, no jeopardizing the future of the finance of the city by doing what this request is. And so, uh, I look at it that way, am I willing to lose a billion too, which more than likely will be lost forever, or am I going to spend nine hundred thousand dollars and go forward and have a facility that will be in addition to what the community needs, expects? We have been number one in so many categories in the history of this city, that, and that I, I see us still going forward in, in building the city that everybody expects us to have, and I think that this just contributes to, to the things that, we have a lettering there from the schools, for example, that states, you know, that it'd be great for the children to go to the buses would go to this, to get a little more in-depth study of the nature, environment, the whole, the, the type of building is, the green building, and, and I'm just saying is that, you know, I feel one, I feel one, have looked at this deep, and, and I guess I look at myself, and I said, if I could justify it, no one, I, I'll be for it, but can I justify it, I won't be for it, and I can honestly say, I can justify spending this kind of money at this time, as opposed to losing all that grant money and going forward. They have answered all the questions as to the manning of this, excuse me, manning this facility, and, and it's minimal, it's seventy five thousand dollars a year, which is nominal, I asked them that they do a fee structure, that people pay to go visit it, and, and that is on the table, in other words, that seventy five thousand can be offset by fee structure, uh, you go to Madison Heights and look at their facility there, it, it's heavily used by schools, they do buses into that facility they have there, it's a fifteen mile, classroom to wait for, it's an unbelievable thing for the community. Uh, so, I, I guess, you know, we are down, we are down as far as activities in this city, we used to have a pool at, at Beachwood, we don't have anymore, these tennis courts over there, we don't have anymore, we're kind of depleting the city from those things that our residents use, and this is something that a resident can use and be very proud of, so, that's my take on it.
Um, Mr. Scherr?
Can I speak to your side?
Sure.
Okay?
Yep.
First, I believe your analysis is flawed. If we don't take care of our people, if there's a fire in a house, I'm going to tell the people, go run to the firehouse, tell them there's a fire, come on and put it out for me. We, I, I, I understand your, your position, but I think it's, it's irrelevant now, for the history that we're going through right today. The people, I agree, it's a tremendous thing, it's good, I agree with it, not now, we cannot afford to spend, even though you tell me it's Parks and Rec money, we cannot afford to spend that Parks and Rec money. I think it can change, we can change. We use money, the different money from different departments to do a road, or do a this, do a that, what can't be done with the Parks and Rec money? Well, they're holy, we can't use that.
They're doing it with their money.
What are the people, what are the people out there going to say?
We are loaning their money, just like you would go to the bank and borrow money to them, to buy a car or buy a house.
They're loaning the fire department money to hire firemen, loan the police office to hire police officers.
You're missing the point, holy.
I'm not missing the point, you, you don't want to use the money where it's most needed by the people, telling me, it's in the Parks and Rec budget, and it's holy, you can't use it.
No, you can't under the charter, who's the charter reader?
I don't have to read it.
Well, that's what it says.
I know what it says, does it make it right? But they can use the money to fix a sinkhole, a road, what does that got to do with Parks and Rec? If they can lend money to one entity, they can lend money to another entity. Uh, I'm not going to vote for it, I want to put it on hold, I'm not killing it all again, I'm not saying it's so good, delay it, delay a little while, we can't afford, they can't afford to spend any money, I heard this, I heard they want to sell the, sell the golf course, is it true?
Uh, that would not be true, sir.
Well, I heard, okay.
Uh, to the chair, they, there is a, um, a study that needs to happen about whether golf courses should be private, uh, or not, not as always.
All right, but the nature preserve of the forest cannot benefit the people today, at this moment, when you thought, even now, six months or a year from now, because the economy is getting worse, worse, let them hold on to that money of the Parks and Rec for their own use, then. It's still going to cost up to a million bucks, where do we get it, from nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, where are we getting that?
Parks and Recreation.
So there it is, it's from the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, they're responsible for paying for it.
So why aren't they responsible to lend us, uh, all the money?
People here building the Parks and Recreation, same as they have golf fields, the same way, they all jump past the village.
So they're taking the field, when they're here, they spend all these, all this money.
I don't know, I talked to some of them, they told them, they thought it was great.
I talked to people too, they tell me, and they go to the bowling golf, they go, uh, they put raw hump.
I mean, why?
Come on.
I mean, I, well, they voted for public safety, that money is, it's going there, it is, it is going to public safety, police and fighter, for all of it, sucking for that.
What, the project, this project?
No, I'm saying what the millage was, was police and fighter, it wasn't for the nature study.
Well, the Parks and Rec has the millage money too, the Parks and Rec has a millage.
But two hundred and some thousand dollars only out of that.
I don't, every dollar counts.
Well, yeah, it does, you're absolutely right.
Well, I'm not going there.
But the Parks and Recreation Board, really, is the one that makes the decisions.
Okay, but what the council decided a long time ago is not, is not relevant today, they have to rethink it, so, they have to rethink the whole thing.
Um, I'd like to say, first of all, that, uh, my support of this project has never wavered, um, I think what we've done so far in, um, at Carpenter Lake is phenomenal, and it's been duly recognized by, uh, numerous outside folks, um, but we are in a dilemma, and, Don, I appreciate how this is laid out, because this, this, this really is the crux of, of the whole thing, um, there's a pro and a con to this. Um, I, um, I have some, some questions that, um, however, that I need to get clear on. Uh, Jim, uh, to you, uh, the L R P, uh, capital projects, can it also be used, uh, let's say if we needed, um, new firemen?
No, that's not capital projects.
Couldn't, couldn't be used for equipment, I think.
No, we have a, with the equipment revolving fund for that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we do, we do have that fund, that, for example, we received a call today from Fire, they're going to be asking for some, uh, replacement vehicles, and, uh, that fund is where you.
Okay, so we have, uh, basically, it's for bricks and mortar, and, and roads, sewers, infrastructure?
Uh, generally, uh, infrastructure, not, not usually, uh, watered sewer, because they're.
We, we give it to roads.
Yes, roads is where you, is your pri- is your primary, primary focus of that.
What hap- what should hap- what would happen if the, um, um, we went ahead with this, and then we're putting in, uh, a new burden on Parks and Rec?
Right.
To pay for, to pay for, as you told us, um, and I, uh, I want to back up a minute and say, I appreciate the work that you've put into this, uh, because what you've done is, you've given us, um, a, charted a course of how we could safely, or relatively safely proceed with this project, um, but it's not risk free.
Uh, true, not totally risk free.
Right, it's not risk free.
It has a hundred and, if you go beyond the first four years, first four years, if I was close to risk free, as you could be with twenty nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars in a seven million dollar budget, it's not much, uh, and also the operating cost would be covered, be, by, I suggested, uh, reducing the interest rate on an existing loan. Where it's, where it starts to become, uh, more of a, of a pressure point for Parks and Rec, is after the, that, for the sixth year and thereafter, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, six fifty one per year, plus the operating. thousand, six fifty-one per year, plus the operating, which would be a hundred and, which would be another seventy-five, it's a five hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. Um, that's, uh, not insignificant, uh, however, the thought is that if we would go forward, the least we need to do is to have, give advance time, because there are things that need to be done in Parks and Recreation for capital planning and, uh, lots of things need to be done, there they came out, locker rooms, uh, swimming pools.
That's where I'm going.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Um.
And that's why we're suggesting leave that fund balance alone until we get in, we're gonna dig in deep in the Parks and Recreation. A lot of work's been done already, uh, but we need to, we need to take the work that we have and, and go even deeper.
Okay.
And have a, and have a, a plan for the capital projects.
So, that's where I'm, that's exactly where I'm going. So, what, uh, what happens to parks and rec? Um, I, I'd li, uh, I'd like to be an optimist about the real estate market in South East, or South East and Richland, um, but it looks like it's gonna be a very long haul, um, especially given Proposal A, uh, that, let's say miraculously, property values start to rise with the cap in Proposal A of five percent, um, it's gonna take years. So, um, this is very worrisome to me. Uh, so, what would happen, let's say after five years, parks and rec, um, can't operate, I mean, can't assume this, this cost, then what happens? Does it, can it default on a LERF loan? Uh, does it cut, shut down business?
Well, let's put, uh, it's a good question, and it's one of the benefits of a term loan, you know, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be defaulting on like a bond issue.
Right.
Which is a nightmare, you never wanna be in that situation. Um, uh, that's a fair question, uh, and I would, I would say that, you know, if, again, um, we would have to pre-plan for this because it's an additional burden, uh, we're looking at, as, as, as we know in the financial plan, we're looking at two more, at least two more years of, I'm using a very pessimistic, people have heard this, you know, right, labor negotiations and et cetera, I'm using eleven percent drop next year, overall, which I hope is wrong, but I'm already told by the county that eight percent of leases is gonna happen. Okay, I'm sticking with my eleven till, you know, I get further information, and then eight and a half the year thereafter. At that point, you take the level off and start to increase. Uh, in general, you do have the problem of Proposal A, which, uh, in general, holds you to the lesser five percent of the rate of inflation. There's some wiggle room in there if things come back to reconstruction, uh, and, uh, in commercial, uh, but in general, that's kind of a general rule, so, so it is hard to, to stage a comeback, so to speak, it takes time, no question about it, I totally agree with that.
Okay.
Again, this is why this thing has to be, you know, viewed in a large context, and why I thought the original plan that we had was too aggressive as regards, if we're gonna do it, too aggressive as regards the Parks and Recreation situation. So, that's why I'm saying use these capital funds.
Alright, so.
And, and, and take at least four years, reduce them out, so that there's time to adjust the situation.
Um, the other thi, another thing that troubles me, um, about this is, uh, I, uh, and no disrespect to anybody, but I personally have a hard time believing that the operating cost with security, utilities, staffing, is gonna be held at seventy-five thousand. I, I just.
Well, it's got fifteen thousand of wiggle room in it, so, that's.
I'm skeptical, I, I just tell you, I'm skeptical.
That, that's, I would be on the view on this. Most of it's because Mary Carlock is the owner. Okay, so, you could make the case that, oh, no, it's really all of Mary Carlock's pay plus, okay, but we're, she's already on the payroll, so I want you to know how we came up with it. Twenty thousand in utilities, which is way high, I mean, we boosted that up big time, okay, but, still, this is a lot, so, I don't, gotta be pessimistic on this. Four part-time people, nineteen hours a week, ten dollars an hour, that's about thirty-some thousand. So, it took, it, it totals around sixty thousand, I say leave it at seventy-five, 'cause I'm taking a stand.
Well, I, I think you gotta have a figure of cost of security too, because, um, that's, that, um.
That's huge, but I don't know what.
Here's a building out, uh, out of view.
We have an architect here, and we'll, can you help us with that number? Security, 'cause I've got fifteen thousand to work with. That's a hard number to pin down, um, so the only way you could do that is to go with a, uh, security company.
Well, in, in the plans, are there cameras, uh, in the plans?
I'll answer that, it was mentioned in the finance committee that we could put cameras up.
But they're not in the cost right now.
But they were, that's minimal cost. Do you have satellite cameras now?
Alright, the other thing that, uh, is of great concern to me is that we're being, um, sort of pushed because of deadlines to make a decision, and I feel this decision has to be made in the broader contact of every, every facility needing parks and rec. Um, and I don't know them all, uh, but I know that, uh, we have a very tired Beachwood Center, that, um, it, it, it needs work, we have facilities across the way that, that need work, um, and, uh, it makes me nervous to, uh, build yet more facilities when we're having trouble taking care of what we've got. Um, I, uh, and finally, I guess the other thing I would say is, I think this decision is so important, um, because it is going to, it's going to have, um, potential ramifications for a number of years, that to be asked to make this decision tonight, I am not comfortable with. Uh, further, I think there's going to be a new council, uh, or reconfigured council shortly, um, I think the new members, uh, it should be a full council decision, all seven of the people who are, are going to be responsible for, um, this course of action. Uh, I am not comfortable making this decision tonight because of that and because of, where is the plan for the rest of parks and rec? The facility, uh, uh, plan? And, and that, that really bothers me.
Um, I, I think the, uh, you know, what's missing here is the discussion that we had, I think everything that you're saying has been discussed, uh, Parks and Recreation was here at that meeting, and we discussed these things, and, uh, and you're absolutely right, but I don't think personally that, that it is because of lack of funds, I think it is because it hasn't had the attention that it, because there's money there, and, and when there's money there and things are not taken care of, then you have the results that you have. Uh, I talked to the city administrator, and he was, he was suggesting that they put the whole package together, you could bond for it and get it all done, 'cause you have enough money there to do that. Parks and Recreation, well, they have just six million dollars here. So, we have six million dollars, and there's no reason for the shower to be what they did, there's no reason for the locker rooms to be like that, I mean, if there's your house, you'll have it fixed, you got the money, if you don't have the money, that's when you don't do it. I mean, you need rooms upstairs, I mean, the elevators, I mean, all these things were discussed at this meeting, and, and you still look at whether or not, you know, we, we could still finance this and go forward with this project. Uh, and it is a tough call, I mean, I'm not making light, but, you know, I, I see that, that, um, with all the money we have on the table presently, and all the actions taken by council that lead us up to this point.
Up to the line.
I mean, it's not really led up to today because of the date, because we have met that deadline and passed it down, kicked it down the road a little bit, so, they are not gonna give us any more extensions. And the word is that if the five hundred thousand is gone, that agency is not gonna exist probably, and then new administration, so that money's gone. So, with everything that is presently on the table, you're talking about losing a million too. And I'm saying is that when you go through the organization, you know, what we budget for, what we spend, you know, the, the amount of money that we're really talking about, like I said, you know, if you can sacrifice one mile of roadway, I mean, don't forget, we had a change order on Franklin Road for eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, so, so, and putting the money in perspective, when you look at, you know, what did we do? We coughed it right up, eight hundred thousand dollars. You know, you could've had something that was really, instead of repairing, something that should've been done, completed, and, and, and be proud of, we sunk another from a million dollar project, the additional eight hundred thousand dollars, and, and, and then we got nothing, we got Franklin Road. What I'm trying to say is, here you have something substantial that the community can use, the community should be able to, you know, we have really taken a lot away from the community as far as parks and rec. You remember, we used to be gold medal award winners, we used to have golf fields over here, we had little league tournaments here, we had, we had a pool at Beach Woods, we had ice skating arena over there, ice skating arena here, you had, I mean, tennis courts, I mean, look, we've really pared down and taken away what people were really using. And, and now, the only thing they can use is when they come over here, or whatever exists in way of parks and recreation, and that is getting minimal. And, and so, you know, if you, you know, we don't even have Kettup anymore. So, so it's, uh, I mean, to me, to me, I just think that we have depleted, uh, parks and rec to the point where we have, we have bought a lot of Bavarian property, you know, the woods and things like that, but we don't, we haven't really bought anything substantial that, that residents can really use and say.
Well, Don, part of that is because times have changed. Um, there, there wasn't, uh, a great demand for the swimming pool at Beachwood, quite honestly. Um, there were other, other interests, um, and we decided, uh, and one thing we haven't even mentioned is, uh, we decided to support a youth center that now, its funding is in jeopardy, um, and I would hate to see us lose that. Um, I think nothing's gonna stay the same, uh, clearly, and people's tastes and interests have changed, so, part of, part of, you know, we've added a miracle field, we've, um.
With Edith and Ellis.
Yeah, I know, but.
We don't maintain it, we don't do anything to that.
We have permitted other things, we let little seizures come in, um, and I'm not sure where we are with them, but it sounds like they're not doing everything they said they do.
They, they are, um, now a customer, and we no longer have the relationships we had with them.
Right.
So, um. They're, they're really against ice time.
Yeah.
But what, but what do you really have?
We're, yeah, we're doing better.
What, what do you really have for the residents to, to, today, parks and recreation? We have had, I mean, you look at England Park, and there's so many foreign buses in that parking lot, you know, because catalog foundation and federal money was used, you can't prohibit anybody from using it, you know, and we turned down a million and a half dollars for Thunder Rice building a, a, a beautiful golf field over there, you know, because people use it, but it's not golf field people using it, you know, we could've had soccer fields there, we could've had a lot of things free, you know, and the, I, we, we make decisions, you know, that I don't think are really in the, the, I, I hate to say in the best interest of what residents come here to use anymore. And, and, you know, they go to the library, and all the computers are used by all, everybody but cup builders, you know, I mean, we can't keep them, we can't restrict them out of there, I mean, everything you go to, meeting rooms are full, computers are full.
I go to Carbon Lake.
Parking, yeah.
And it's loaded with people from farmlands.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Uh, and so, the same thing could be said about the nature center.
But if you have fee structure, right, so maybe we're talking about parking over by the library, I mean, looking for revenue, I mean, there's, I mean, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I, 'cause I know it's a tough call, but I, but I'm trying to say is, we haven't built anything for our residents in the last fifteen, twenty years. And it paying the bill.
Simon, is this finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim, I do wanna say thank you for this information, you have, uh, put together every, and answered every question that we had, and as you hear, this is a very, very tough, uh, decision that we have to make, and we have reviewed this up and down, and this is like the third or fourth time, and a lot of the information that we discussed is not, uh, you have not heard or, what, what have you, so, we, everything that's been discussed here, we've discussed. We've pulled our hairs out trying to figure out how we could, uh, continue with this, with this project, because the council has, over, over the years unanimously supported this, this project, but what, um, the finance committee decided was that we needed a full council to discuss this and make the decision, because it will be affecting us for a long period of time. So, what's before us now is do we answer this now or later? And you brought up an interesting point that caught my ear, is that you wanted the full council to vote on this. The only issue is that is that they need a decision by the twenty-third, and I don't know if a full council meeting or something like that is even possible before that date. That would be something, um, you'll need to have to, to say, but I do feel like everybody should have full, be able to weigh in on it. We, we have worked the numbers back and forth, we have discussed parks and rec capital, uh, campaigns, the capital issues that they have as far as what's needed, Beachwood, the, the pool, how the, the locker rooms, the painting, parks and rec itself, the rooms, carpeting, I mean, we have looked at everything, and they, what, what, what does, does not, he has said that this is something that he can do, that they can fit into parks and rec, that they can, that they can afford to do this. Uh, Mary Carlock and the architect have guaranteed completion by the deadline. They didn't get rid of the department or make the demand or the change in when it was due. We have to have it completed within a year. They have to start on it now in order to do that. Jim has given us the most innovative way to do it without hurting the city. Um, it's really a tough, tough decision, I understand everything that's been said, and I, I, I agree with everything, I, I just think that, do you wanna lose the time, money, and commitment that we've made to this project and not go forward? It's just really a, a really hard thing, but given all the information that's here, just the, uh, the most innovative way that I've seen, Jim, I, I really have to commend you on this. We've worked, worked the numbers over and over, and we've had lengthy, lengthy, lengthy discussions on this. We've torn it apart, and we've had everybody's input, and, um, whatever decision we make tonight, I think, just know that we've given it a lot of thought, we really are trying to do the best, and we're trying to, um, trying to keep this going, trying to keep the, um, the grant going, keep the project going, and make the residents happy in, in the process without causing any real hardships on, on, uh, on the city. And I think with these numbers and the way that this project is presented tonight, that's something we can do.
Alright, everyone, listen to me, Sharon, everyone here has had, that, that one of the few has had at least one opportunity. Everyone here has had, that has won the seat, has had at least one opportunity to speak. There are residents here that have informed me that they would like to speak, and I'd like to give them an opportunity.
There's one question that was asked, to take, I could give a better answer to it, but I didn't get a full answer. Councilman Cyber asks, what would happen if they absolutely could afford to make, uh, this hundred and ninety thousand dollars pension per year? And if we had to, uh, I'm sure we could forgive the loan, okay? Take the council action. So we could call a transfer, just say that, you know, that an asset still our fund is needing, well, because we don't like to do that, we've never done it, we, you know, every department's met, met their objectives on this. But again, this is not, this is not like if you borrowed the money for the bond issue, that's a disaster if you, if you don't meet those things. So I think that's a more common, uh, to, to your, wouldn't be a good thing, but it's possible, though.
All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Lance, I'm gonna do the last speaker. I've gotta get public to one speaker enough.
I have a thought. Sometimes when you step back, you have a better future, easier future, which I believe. Now, the boy here, the talk they're holding on here, they gave no solution. If I could step back, so we'll lose some money, but we'll have a better future in the future. And I believe it. So I would, I would, again, say, let's put it on hold and see what happens. Maybe if I lose some money, you may not lose your money.
Uh, there would be, there would be a loss of a million one hundred and twenty two thousand. There's, there's no question of that.
There's gonna be more cost towards a million than that, and you're gonna lose more.
We need, we need some clarification.
It's going to be a, 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 uh, a major reserve for everybody in southeast commission.
Okay, I, I wanna clarify this number before, before we, uh, move forward. Um, I don't want any confusion, I need the numbers. Uh, with regard to the grant funding, the grant funding is five hundred thousand state M D N R, one forty E P A. We know the state M D N R is likely go away from the E P A too, I know the M D N R, but we gotta notice on, that's in here. So five hundred M D R, one forty E P A, one fifty donation from Denso. That adds up to six forty, seven forty, seven ninety thousand. What makes up the, the other amount to get you to a million one twenty-two is the three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that's already been committed to architectural fees, of which we spent about two thirds, we spent two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars on architect fees. And that, again, um, that piece of it, you know, isn't, isn't lost, because, you know, unless we were ever in the project, because the, you know, the plans are, you know, there. We spent two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents. So far, an architect fee is fragile. We have two, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents, as I want to say, the architect, so I get paid first. Um, the, the amount allocated totally for architect fees, and this is not just architect fees, it's site work, soil borings, engineering, permitting, there's a whole list of things.
Absolutely, that's a condone.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just laying out the numbers. Okay? So that's what comprises a million one twenty-two. So that's, that's, that's what it is.
I, I wanna add, did you want to say something? I wanna add something that had, that we had talked about before that wasn't brought up here, and that is yet the advantage of having this L R set out over time has been it gives us an opportunity to do fundraising. And Denso has promised to help leverage that money, and another corporation has expressed interest, so it would give us an opportunity for some corporate fundraising. That's what the L R's loan has, has enabled us to do. Um, madam, mayors?
Denso, have we got some money back fifty times? Something lost for a million, this and that.
Well, but there are only one, there are only one. Ms., Ms. Lawrence has reported.
I, I also want to say that, um, this project started, I think, in two thousand and six. It's a great idea. Uh, there's not a person I know that doesn't use or have Denso tax on it, hasn't fallen in love with it. It's an amazing, um, nature area for us in Southville. We have two other that people don't use. This one is used and it has the plants used. The, the decision before us is do we obligate our staff and our funds to build this facility and, because of whatever has happened, we have to do it right now. And I just wanna paint a scenario. Um, can someone tell me how many positions are we down in Park Shorette?
We have currently twenty-two point seven five, whole time people in Park Shorette.
How many are we down?
Uh, that, they are down significantly from past numbers. They were as high, actually, they're down probably if you take a long look, uh, going back to oh, four, oh, five, they're down about fifty percent.
Okay. So being down fifty percent, when we went for the Miller's own, talked about the reducing revenue that's gonna be coming into Park Shorette, we have a dedicated, you know, um, we are facing an environment where we won't be able to do what we did in the past. We highlighted during our discussion some of the real challenges that we have in Park Shorette. If you visit any major city now that has invested in something, it has been in their Park Shorette facilities. They now have places for people to come work out, community centers, and we do not have a community center place where people can come, have a cup of coffee. Our meeting rooms are extremely antiquated and not updated, um, to the point that it's almost embarrassing. Except when I visit other facilities, I'll just say Romulus, um, have a beautiful facility. I've been to Troy, I've been to, um, other facilities, and they're investing in their community, so places where everyone can come. It's being used as a senior gathering spot or as a community gathering spot. And what we have sitting next door to us is an example of what a modern, of innovative city looks like. That's our library. We, we, we have our footprint, we, we know what it looks like. So you take our library and put it against this building, which even in this building, we're talking about L R. Um, I'm not that significant, but I literally freeze and burn every time the season changes. We don't have a heating system, I'm not one of those. Our, our, um, handicap accessibility is not up to cover, and that's really unacceptable, but it's not. We have a pool that literally, they had a hose running because the filters stopped working so that it could gerry bridget to make it work during the summer. We have some major challenges with the, the one pool that we have left that's gonna cost a significant amount of money. Our, our locker room, are embarrassing. It's, it's, and there's a lot of people in this room don't use our Park Shorette, but I'm telling you, our citizens do. And our citizens deserve to have modern and, and efficient fees in our Park Shorette and what we currently have. And, you know, I, I, I said one thing that I agreed with the former governor on, Jennifer Granholm, we will fix it first. We need to take, if we're gonna use L R's money, we need to invest in our existing properties. You take that pavilion there, that is a tr- potential revenue maker, and it's not Wi-Fi, it's so many other things that, uh, we just recently bought chairs, so that if someone wants to use it, that they could have chairs, we could have chairs for them to use. You go over to the Berg Center, and, and if someone wants to cater out of that kitchen, the kitchen is not functioning, we ripped the kitchen out of the Park Shorette facility over here, because for some reason it didn't work. We don't have, we don't even have microwaves or something where someone wants to have a meal there, that it would make this property more attractive. There's, the list, and I think, I think for the council to make a decision without seeing a, an actual list of committed projects for Park Shorette is unadvised. Because you're making a decision on something to me that is a very emotional thing, because it's great. It's, it's, it's like what you would like to have. And I would equate this to the person going asking for aid when he's driving a, a Bentley. If you're driving a Bentley, but yet still you want me to give you something, it questions, well, if you're gonna build this really nice interpretive center over in the woods versus fixing up our facilities that we have now, that more people will use, and I'm all, I'm a hundred percent for it. But ladies and gentlemen, why do you think the, the person who's gonna build that wonderful complex over off the ten miles, cool about it? It's because it was a great idea, it was planned, he looked at it or she looked at it, and it wasn't the time to do it. They still own the land. There's a, a housing development that was going up on Southville Road, they stopped in the middle of the project. It was a great project, people buy the house, but then economy would bottom up. So it comes a time when you have to evaluate where we are. We still have the issue of the state program on the table. We're talking about that. We're talking about all these things that we gotta fix first, and, and the, the bad thing about where we are is that we have to do it now, we don't have a choice. And the two hundred dollars that we have invested in this is a design that we don't have, and we, you know, I'm sure, we're not the only city that, that has been given a grant that can't utilize it this time. Do you know how many cities are not fixing roads because it's a match and they can't match the grant? The federal dollars are saying, well, fix your raggedy road, and they know they need it, and the road is not being fixed 'cause they can't match it. And it's not that, it's not a need for it, but it's the reality of where we are. We have been, it has been validated, we're gonna have less money next year. Now, we keep saying one person who was a phenomenal part of Park Shorette, a very creative, innovative person, she has taken her ability and her skills and her passion, perfectly related to the reflection of her work. But who's to say she's gonna be here for how long? We've had a massive amount of retirements, she or her colleagues. So if your colleague leaves, we are restricted to keeping her in that, over in the interpretive center. We don't have the flexibility, because we're saying in order for this to work, part of the number is her salary being in that center. I'm not comfortable with tying up a decision for staffing based on that. I think that the emotion of saying, yes, we need this or we want that, I'm with you. But can we afford with all of the challenges that we have? And I will, I will say this too, I asked the question, if we had the money and didn't fix it, then why? And I was told that we were told to be conservative, to protect our money, to make sure that we have money in the bank, 'cause we have never as a city spent out all of our money, because that's not the fiscal thing to do. You make sure you always have a buffer and you have money in the bank. So the bottom line is, I want Park Shorette to be brought up to the standard that, and Pam, you're gonna love this, the Southville standard, bring it up, because we are, we're, we're falling behind tremendously. The landscaping on our pool, you know, we have beautiful landscaping everywhere. I wish our city officials would go through the pool and look at it. Go to, go to the, uh, Beachwood and look at the landscaping around our clubhouse. The clubhouse at Beachwood. Come on. When's the last time that building has been upgraded? And so we have these decisions to make, and if there's some kind of way, and you're saying that we have to do it now or else they'll let it go, are we restricted forever to ever go back and write for a grant? I'm asking the question.
Oh, uh, probably Mary's the expert, but this particular grant is likely, it's one-time money because, that's right, no, there's no rights involved, uh, where they got like a windfall?
The state did get a windfall.
Did you speak up, Fred?
The state did get a windfall in natural resource money, that's what funds the grant, and we know this, the future grants, they're presently capped at three hundred thousand, so you will not get an opportunity to get a grant at five hundred thousand, they're capped at three hundred thousand.
But we can go back.
If that can be changed in two or three weeks or five years-
You can go back, you can go other places, that's true. We're just saying that we, you know, if, if, what we're really saying in three words is decision time. Okay? Because Exhibit C says, get it to us by November twenty-third. I don't know, we might go stretch that a bit, but I'm humbled, afraid to ask. Okay? Um, uh, so, so that's, you know, that would be gone, whether you could get other sources later, who knows?
I don't think we have an explorer naming rights at all.
No. We, it, I wanna say that this plan takes in-
At least, at the meeting.
Takes into account, to be cautious, I've taken, I've included zero revenues of any type, plus zero contributions from any other source, zero donations, zero revenues of any type. And, you know, so it, it, it's, it's overly cautious, but I'd rather state it that way and then, you know, they take it positively, that's great. That's, that's a way of starting.
Mr. Shorette has given us the worst case scenario, where he's looked at everything to say under the worst case scenarios we could always do. I wanna mention something about the grant. With the, with the M D N R, once you default on a grant, you let it go, it gets a black mark against you, it's very, very hard to get the grant in future, they really do hold it against you. This is unlike anything else, this is one source for this, and this, this we know, this we know. Um, I mean, I do, I, the members of the public said they wanted to speak, I would like to hear from them. Um, thank you.
You know what, actually, I'd like, I'm a giant, uh, influence, uh, conversation here by the mayor.
Well, you-
She talked, she talked about the Park Shorette was antiquated and not good enough and all that.
But that's why we're not touching the fund, touching the fund out.
What about our fire department is antiquated, they can't-
This money can't be used for that.
I, I know that, but we can find a way.
Not through this money.
Well, that's what you say.
No, it's true, we, we're the ones who-
I think money can be found anywhere and anyway.
Sorry.
All right. The people who walk into an antiquated Park Shorette, but if they walk into a antiquated fire department or police department, that people will be hurt more than, more than not if, more than than walking into the Park Shorette building.
But we can't take, we can't, we can't take that money and use it again. But can, I, I wanna-
But we're spending a million dollars of our money on it, matching the fund.
There's people, there're people that want to be heard, some of the public.
Well, that's called-
Uh, Mr., we, I don't think we have to call Eddie, I, what do you want to do else?
Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. Lawrence Haynes, where is she? Okay, that's it. Uh, would you like to come forward?
No, I'm ready.
Well, I just, I mean, I knew that she'd be on time because they had called me, and I'm not, you know, I don't wanna let, anybody that wants to speak from the neighborhood, please, well, you know, Mr. Bart, why don't you step up?
Up there?
Yes, go up there and you'll be in the neighborhood, and then, uh, you have five minutes.
Hi.
Say whatever you want to say.
Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, my name is, uh, Bart Eddie, I live at two five five two five, uh, Ormond Drive. Um, Ormond Drive is just north of Carpenter Lake, about half a mile. First of all, I have to say, um, to, you know, I'm a, a kind of environmental skeptic in a way, and when I, uh, heard that Carpenter Lake was going to be developed, I thought, uh-oh, you know, what's the city going to do here? But it's an incredible piece, it really is. We use this as a walking pathway, it's tastefully done. If you've never been there before, it's not a park filled with, uh, straight lines, it's an adventure to walk through that park. It's a beautiful city, and congratulations to all of you. Secondly, I'd like to say that I thought that the, um, financial presentation by Mr. Shorette was, was very- was, was very effective, um, very complete, as far as my understanding goes. I'm a school administrator, um, in Detroit. I work for Detroit Community Schools, the charter school there. We're involved in a lot of grant activity. Um, I do know that to refuse, or default, or whatever you wanna call it, on a grant, uh, it's really, um, pretty hurtful to the reputation of the institution that's applying for that grant. Um, where it gets around, and the likelihood of achieving another grant is, I would say, pretty slim. Not impossible necessarily, but you really hurt yourself in that regard. My feeling is, and I want to say it's a feeling, that if this grant is refused and the nature center put off, that the likelihood of this, uh, nature preserve ever happening, um, is not very likely, given our current economic conditions and where we see things going and so on. On the other hand, I think that there, there is a, uh, an investment, an enormous investment for the young people in Southfield. Here's another way of looking at city need. We need policemen, we need firemen, we all know that, and no one disagrees with that. But we also need something for our children, too. And school systems can no longer afford such kind of activities out of their school buildings. And as a rule, at least I know that, and many school districts have had to cut that. And what a wonderful opportunity this is for the children of Southfield to not be put off into the far future when they're moved on, but to, um, have this opportunity to do this now. So, really interesting. Uh, I do hope that you adopt this. I'm very much in favor of it. I think it's a very serious consideration about the loss of this, um, potential grant and this project ever happening. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eddie. Um, is my little cousin here? Yeah, um, okay.
Yeah, talking to my cousin, can you, can you? I reside at two-four-five-zero-one Pencil, in town where you're in a community. Um, got the, uh, word, the, uh, Carpenter Lake, I received the money, and I was really excited. Um, mainly because we, my kids and my family, we were there with the inception, when we first celebrated the opening of Carpenter Lake. And we were very excited. Um, and one of the questions I first asked then was, is there going to be an interpretive center? And I was told, yes. And, um, I also read online, I think someone read earlier, so I won't read again, about the, uh, future timeline for when the center was going to be, you know, brought about. And I was really excited because my kids, um, my girls and my sons, we, uh, they, I homeschool. And we currently are attending an interpretive center in Dearborn. Uh, University of Michigan, Dearborn has an environmental interpretive center that is excellent. And, uh, as a matter of fact, we're there at that inception. Uh, there's a wall outside the building where the kids were able to make, uh, ceramic tiles when it first started. So my kids that are older, my daughter's twenty-five, she can come back and bring her kids to show where she, you know, was there when that building first started. And I have a nine-year-old sitting back there, who, you know, kinda doing this for bed, and a little bit to go. But, um, we love the center, and it's an excellent asset to that community. Now, me living in Southfield, so, um, with the number of kids that I have, we've just traveled back and forth to that center for years, saying that my daughter's twenty-five, you can imagine. We've been going back and forth. And I've always said, living in Southfield, I would love to have things right in my neighborhood. That's why I was so excited to see the center, uh, you know, come about. Now, um, I'm still excited because from what I'm hearing, there's money. And I think that that's great. Now, I know that there are other things, and that there are other concerns, but I'd like for you to look at something down the line. When there's dismal, or lack of hope in a community, it's always good to have some symbolism of hope. Uh, the economy is not good now, but if you, part of that is confidence, too. If you expect things to get worse, then sometimes they will. And even in that, you have to prepare for that and still offer hope with that. I mean, we may not have the amount of money we had years ago to do certain things, but we still have joy, and we still create things in our families that we enjoy. And I'd like to see that be a part of our neighborhood. Um, I talked to Mr. Slimek, and he is the program director at, um, the interpretive center. And I just passed this one, this is, I don't have one of his copies. And, um, I wanna share some of the things he said to me. That center there, uh, the county didn't want, Wayne County did not want that center to be built. As he said, as a matter of fact, your mom, they were gonna build the roads through that center. He said they were in opposition to it. He said, "But since then, they have come on board." He said, "Now they understand, they see, and it has been around for a while." So I invite you to look at that website. Although they are funded, uh, partly by the, uh, schools, they also have private donors. So, um, he said, and he said, "Well, I wish that we could have, uh, something like a fringe group or things like that, which is something that we can do." So I'm looking at the fact that, um, you know, some of the objectives that they have was to foster student community awareness, and some of the things that we said, we'd do the same thing. Uh, way to allow boys, children and families to come together, which we still do. Um, not just myself, but there are other homeschoolers and people that are not homeschoolers that use that facility as is. For my relatives, my family coming to town, that's one of the first places we go, it's right in my backyard. I just wrote an article in our, uh, O V C A about the, uh, Carpenter Lake itself because I thought, wow, this is great. And the last sentence I wrote was, "Stay tuned, uh, for upcoming news." So I didn't print the article because I said, "Okay, I'll find out what's gonna happen tonight." There's also an opportunity for research to be done. Uh, you know, laboratories, that's one of the things Mr. Slimek also talks about. And one of the things, too, is it keeps and it brings people to your neighborhood. We just had new neighbors moving next door to us that had three little kids, and this is a great place for them to come. And he says also, there's an urban suburban program, which we can also do the same thing. So I'm looking at that like, this is really good. You know, I don't know all the, the ins and outs of things, but I think this is something we can do. And I hope that you all will take a better look at it, because if you look at now, first we have money that is available, we have five hundred thousand dollars. If it goes down to three hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand, we'll lose. But even if so, you can get more grants, but if we're on board already, and the economy gets better, then that means that things will get better for us. Now, it may cost more later when the economy is very trivial. So it's very trivial when we have this money here, and we can do with what we have and expect for more later. That's, you know, that's my hope. I still have kids, and I still have family here, and I would like to see things like this happen. And I'd like to not drive to Dearborn to go to the interpretive center. I mean, and also for other things, I mean, my thought is, wow, this is one thing I don't have to leave Southfield for. And trust me, we don't, we go. We go in the night, my husband took my kids to the, I'll with me. It's almost like a night time, I'm at the interpretive center. I mean, we were driving in the snow to go out here. So families are doing these things. We don't bring other people, other than Southfield residents here, to be a part of this. So there is hope in this. And I like the fact that there is some money, and I like the way he did the figures. Wish I could do that at home. But, um, I think that it's great, and I was hoping that you all would really consider it. Um, I know that there are other things that you have to do, but please be excited.
Thank you. Thank you. I have another request, uh, Ms. Ewes, and then, uh, the smell of, um, and before you, I think I'm destroying the material.
Um, I'm Stephanie Ewes, and I have to concur that Mr. Sharet, that was a stellar presentation. I had pulled the agenda prior to coming to the meeting, and it looked a little convoluted. The explanation is there, but so is the dilemma of choice. Um, I don't use Carpenter Lake, but I believe in the concept of, uh, building the field of dreams that you build, that they will come. I also believe that, uh, based on our position, uh, logistically and politically, that we always should maintain and have the best standards. I agree with Mayor Lawrence, um, that our Parks and Rec, uh, facilities, because those are definitely used, they probably wouldn't have gotten worn out if they weren't used. I do believe that attention should be paid to that. But going even on a concept that I'm not familiar with, when you have residents, or my neighbors, that come and support, and they do, uh, visit this facility, and she explains the impact, the gentleman that I'm sitting next to that came up to the podium, I have to look at the validity of going forward and having a progressive-thinking, uh, organization, a progressive-thinking city. I also agree with Mr. Lance in terms of being conservative, but also that gentleman associated with Detroit Community Schools, my question was answered. Is there a jeopardy of our reputation if we continue to drop grants? I have come to most of the council meetings. I know that we had some type of fallout for a grant from the road commissions because we couldn't get in alignment with Laker Village. That money we did not obtain, and we weren't able to, uh, capture. If we start to promote ourselves in the community where grants that come and are facilitated for us, that we're not going to accept them, it's like a man to go support a woman. He's only gonna come to the door and try to kiss her, take her out so many times, then he's done. So we need to look at it as a similar relationship in terms of our reputation. I'm not trying to be glib, but I was trying to find an example that's impactful that you see as this money is continued to be offered to us, that if we don't accept it, we get a reputation as a non-forward-thinking community. If Mr. Sharet even has the fallout measure, because that's what I measure benefit from. What's in it for us? And then also, too, looking at both sides, and is there a backup plan? He already said that perhaps they can write off any loan issues or whatever. He didn't say we should operate to failure. He's not saying, "Let's plan on that." He's just giving us a thorough looksee into the future if this, if something happens, which also satisfies council and cyber's concerns, which are valid concerns. So it looks like the bases are covered, and if the bases are covered for the worst-case scenario, and as Mr. Farcasi is saying to go forward, it is money that we may not get later on. And so, even though I don't use the facility, I am entrenched in this community. I call myself a soldier for Southfield. I don't have children at home any longer, but when I look at the young man in the back at nine years old, and he is our future, and I talk to that educator back there, and this is something viable, not just for our own students, but now someone's brought up research. Who cares if other schools and other communities want to share our facilities? We are the center of it all, and this can make a big political statement. The redistricting has been done in terms of us being District Fourteen. We have a lot of congressmen that are vying for this particular area. We've had Councilman Conyers, we had Hanson Clark, just in our council meeting audiences. Something big is probably getting ready to happen, where Southfield becomes some type of showpiece or some type of magnet politically. So I believe that we need to look at this in terms of, is it the win-win? If the benefits outweigh the backend potential problems that Mr. Cyber, you know, cautiously is bringing up? If you actually put those numbers up, and, and Mr., um, Mr., um, Sharet is a numbers person, so if it's five in terms of a positive and three negative, if it still propelled, propels us forward, then we need to have the appearance of a forward-thinking community. If you look at Ferndale, Royal Oak, I'm sure they had the same dilemmas on the table, but they went ahead, like this woman said, in terms of hope, they stayed progressive in their, in their thinking, still conservative, but they constantly moved forward to make our facilities cutting-edge, bring them current to some other progressive neighborhoods. And I think that that should be a determining factor. It is a hard decision, but I think Mr. Sharet has covered the loophole. And I do have a concern about our political reputation in terms of additional grant money being afforded and offered to our city. I have a very big concern about us continuing to lose those opportunities because I do feel that it does impact our reputation.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Gordon?
Thank you, Councilor and Mayor. And when you opened the mic, I did wanna say a few words based upon Mr. Cyber's comments that maybe we should hear from the new council that will be coming in. I think first of all, we need to finish what we started. Looking at the note, this project started over five years ago, and I think the funding is in place. It's been clear with Mr. Sharet's figures, that we need to move forward. I think it's important that we consider the future and not just think for the now because the money is available. And if we lose or not move forward with this project, we're looking at losing one point two million dollars that's been, uh, committed on the city's part. I also think it's important that we must include revenues with this, which means, I live in this area. This is exactly in my backyard. I don't think we should have people visiting this facility without him living in front of it. But I also think it's important that we, um, bring in the community, that we don't just try to fund it ourselves until we start attaching to the business community. And lastly, how can we think win-win? We always think win-lose. So I think we've gotta bring in the mindset to think win-win. And I think we should move forward with this. I know the timely miss is an issue, but I don't think it should be delayed any further. Um, but I think we should move forward.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, which, uh, is that?
Thank you for the opportunity, Council President Quotin. Now, I think, uh, for about a couple of months, I talked about the fact that we had this two-point-two-million-dollar SAFER grant for the fire department to augment our staff. I think all of you have heard me say that if we don't accept that grant, that we're gonna be blackballed. I think you also heard me say that we will probably need another grant for new equipment for our esteemed fire department, and we do. I'm a little offended that we are, and I think that Parks and Rec is a great thing. I have taken some of the, uh, classes there. I think the interpretive center is good. But what we're losing sight of is our community is only as strong as our public safety. There is a reason why the word unity is within the word community. And this just goes to show, and it proves to me, number one, I'm not crazy, for the official record, and number two, that we don't have our priorities in order. Now, you guys are talking about missing the deadline, losing this grant, being blackballed, can't get any more money. What about that SAFER grant? Are you concerned about being blackballed there? All of these companies that have gotten these tax abatements, that didn't need it, that was worth billions of dollars? Where are your community businesses in this matter? How come these businesses are not giving back to this community that they support? The restaurants, uh, hiring people? Why can't you go to the business community that you value more than the residents to get some of the money that you need to do some of these things? We are talking about five hundred thousand, and we've got thirty-nine firefighters that we need put back on the staff. Here's a call from a Fortune Five Hundred company. "Hey, we've got a important matter that we need, uh, EMS and fire." "Oh, well, I'm sorry, we didn't accept the two-point-two-million-dollar SAFER grant, so we laid off forty firefighters." "Well, we're not gonna be able to respond to your call in a timely fashion." I'm missing something here. I want somebody to tell me how we're concerned about that grant and not the first grant. I want somebody to tell me why this city used that grant that was already approved in February to market that millage. Now, people, residents, 'cause I know you're gonna hear this meeting on YouTube, do you see now we're gonna need another millage? That that millage was to balance the budget to keep an emergency financial manager out of the city? I wanna hear talk about that SAFER grant. Are we going to accept it? FEMA came up with two-point-two-million dollars, and they're strapped for cash. Other municipalities would have been running down the street to get two-point-two-million dollars. And you guys are, we can't accept- And you guys are, we can't accept it. Now, what I'm not clear on is, there's all this criteria about the safer grant that we were afraid that we can't meet. What about the criteria on the $500,000 grant? Can somebody sit here now, that's sitting at this table or anywhere in this room, tell me what's the difference in the criteria for 2.2 and the criteria for this grant? Now, what is the criteria for the $500,000 grant? Let's see. That you've got to be open for a certain number of hours, or you forfeit the money? You've got to pay it back? A young lady got up here and said that we can just keep applying for grants and grants and grants, and that's true. But for every grant that you apply for, there's criteria. So, are we afraid that we can't meet the criteria? We met the criteria, that's why they approved the grant. What's the difference? And Miss Seymour, I'm elated that you gave me an opportunity to speak. So, I'm going to acquiesce and see lie and not use all of that one minute that you said I had left. But please, somebody answer the question. What is the criteria on this $500,000 grant that you're not concerned about? And explain to the public the criteria on the $2.2 million grant for our fire department to augment the staff that you guys are so scared to accept? Because you're going to lay those firefighters off, that's why you don't want them to accept the money. I'm not crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Phil.
Yeah.
I noticed that Ms. Gerald didn't see a proposal at the box this time.
Oh, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. And I do live in an apartment. I give my P.O. Box for security purposes. Thank you for the inquiry.
Well, maybe you see why. I live at T. R. 441, what's 10 mile in Southfield, and trying to follow that is a little bit difficult, because we're comparing apples and oranges. And I think that, you know, this is a drum Miss Gerald has been beating, and I guess I wish someone would specifically address some of her concerns. However, you know, my association surrounds Carpenter Lake. I, when I first got involved in the association, which is about, I believe it would be 21 years ago, we were working on trying to get Carpenter Lake as, you know, as part for the city. So, while the interpretive center discussion has only been going on for a shorter time, we've been dealing with this for years, okay? That park, every time I go by there, there are all kinds of people using the park. I understand Ms. Jordan's comments about, you know, a revenue stream. However, I think one of the other things to look at, if this is built, is that it would provide an opportunity for families to do something that isn't costly, which is also important to them right now. It's not like taking classes or doing other things. It's something they can all do together in a variety of age ranges. And I am concerned about the idea of letting this particular money go. I don't think that it will ever be available again. And I frankly believe, I believe Mr. Eddie said that, that if it isn't done, built now, it's not going to be built, because I think that now is a time when, first of all, I got to assume that because not a lot of building is going on, that some of the construction costs may actually be slightly lower than we were anticipating when we started all of this. So, you've got that, you've got the grant money, you've got a variety of things that kind of are coming together right now. And I just sort of hate to see us give this away. And the fact that Ms. Jordan, who is on the upcoming council, is in favor of it, I think answers some of the questions. We have another upcoming council person here too. I don't know if he wishes to speak. But it's, there's no question that we need police and fire. But I, you know, as Mr. Lance keeps wanting to say, well, you know, we can change the rules on how we use the money. I don't think so. I think that would be far more dangerous than anything else we might try to do when millages were passed with specific things in mind. I also have to believe that part of what's going on, and I wish Ms. Gerald would stop mouthing and carrying on when I'm attempting to speak, okay? She does this all the time in the public hearing, so let's let you two get this piece of discussion, okay? She's been carrying on to the point where I can't hear what's going on up here, because she is talking to herself back there. Anyway, I also have to believe that part of the problem in terms of what's gone on with police and fire and where we're going is the fact that we have interim chiefs. We don't have a true, you know, we don't have the actual leader in place that's going to be making decisions on personnel. So, I have to believe that that's at least a piece of the factor in terms of what's been going on about personnel issues. Maybe I'm wrong, but I do think that, you know, this is a valuable asset to the community. And, you know, Miss Haynes is sort of an example of somebody who's willing to come here and talk to you, but there are other families, you know, that would like to be able to use this. There are handicapped people who really can't use the park now, because there's no access to bathrooms, okay? And I think I heard that, as Mr. Charette always does, this has sort of been a worst-case scenario in terms of funding. There is nothing to prevent further efforts to secure additional outside money, to even partner with another community if need be, to keep this thing running. So, it just seems to me that, you know, those are things that could be explored as time goes on, and that we ought not to cut off our nose to spite our face.
Just comment very briefly. The personnel complement, first of all, the acting chiefs of the police department have done an excellent job. Second of all, the major factor in the rather rapid reduction of staff in the police department is retirements caused by the actions of the legislature of the state of Michigan.
All right, Ms. come on.
Having to do with healthcare, healthcare issues.
Ms. come on up if I can see.
Thank you.
And just saying now the final rule is I keep naming and addressing the record in your five minutes.
Will do. My name is Jeremy Moss. I live at 29500 Franklin Road in this beautiful city of Southfield, Michigan. And I sat in on the finance committee meeting last Thursday, so I wrote down some of the questions that I was thinking of about it when it was first brought forward, and a lot of them have been asked at this table. And now that answers have been given, I do want to repeat my questions that I was thinking and where I stand kind of on the answers that I've heard. Number one was, can we reapply for this grant? And I haven't heard an indication that the answer is no. There is restructuring in Lansing with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, but they've given a deadline as far as I've heard. But cities apply for grants on a consistent basis. If a grant opens up on any project that a city's looking at, every city kind of attacks it and wants the state funding or the federal funding. I don't think that they keep a tally that Southfield has declined this grant that they've applied for. So, I think that they see it on a case-by-case basis. If the city of Southfield is going to use this money to the best of its ability, they're going to give the grant. And I don't know if they're going to look back and see a past history on one project that they didn't think was financially solvent moving forward with it. The second question was, is the money spent really lost, and is the plan or the data that's been collected, is it still usable in the future? We talked about, we made a, what, $225,000 investment on this. Why would we move forward with $225,000 spent? You know, if we've made such a huge investment, we should go all the way. But it seems to me if we revisit this issue, many of, much of the data that's collected with that $225,000, which is listed here, the soil boring testing analysis, the architectural engineering services, that stays intact. That can be revisited if we, next month, want to move forward and find another grant that's applied for.
266, and that is correct.
In 2012, that would be.
The only time, years, enough years passed.
Right, right. So, it's money invested now that will still help us regardless of what this table decides tonight. Number three were, what other projects were being pushed aside or put lower on the priority list from the Parks and Recreation to fund this project? I subscribe to the notion of fix-it-first. We have problems right now in the Parks and Recreation that we can make further investments in our pool. I know the locker room was discussed on Thursday, was brought up tonight. And number four was, you had mentioned, Mr. Charette, that if there's a sinkhole or something, that will come out of the LRF fund. It seems like LRF should be set aside or at least prioritized for emergency circumstances. That's one, close to $1 million out of a seven and a half million fund that will be used to fund the remaining funds that we need for the reserve center. So, I don't know, you know, obviously there has been no act of emergency going forward. That's why we're standing here. Thank you. So, I don't see this as the most urgent project. I support it. I think we all support it. But it's not an either-or situation of either we support this center here tonight, or we put asphalt over it tomorrow. It's either we build a center at the nature preserve or just preserve the nature as is until we can find the money to support it. So, I know you guys have a tough decision, but it's not mine tonight, so I'll join you definitely.
Thank you.
Following up on what Ms. Jordan said, a win-win, to me, a win-win tonight would be with all the talent that this community has, and everyone's saying we want this interpretive center. The reason why we're sitting here today, because some great ideas have been put out, naming rights, corporate sponsorship, partnership, that sounds tremendous. Someone said that the Farmington Hills people are using it all the time. Why don't we try to form a partnership for funding and operation with Farmington Hills, but because of this timeline, we don't have the ability to do that? So, to me, a win-win would be to reapply for the, for the grant. If it's $300, $300,000, and we get the sponsorship and those things that we're saying, we still get our interpretive center, and we get to utilize all these great ideas that's coming forth, because I think it would be good. However, at this time, and to say that we're going to tell Park to rent, everything else is sub-priority, this is a priority, because they're going to have to manage this project, and they're going to have to have one of their staff people totally devoted to this, I think that's the win-win here. I think if we, if we take the moment, because Denso is not snapping their money back, they already have the architectural drawings, and it's an opportunity to have a win-win, and we can plan on a, because some great ideas have come up. And Don said he brought up the naming rights. Have we explored that? Have we explored? I think that's great, because there's all kind of, the states that they would partner with us and give us all kind of credit if we do some joint partnerships. So, if Farmington Hills is already there, let's capitalize and then get some credit for that, for Parks and Rec. And to me, that's the win-win.
We can do that later, but the idea of this grant being lost, really, it is lost. It's not like FEMA grant, it's a one source. And if you don't perform, it's very difficult, which would, if we deny this, it's very difficult to get future grants. That department and the grants may even go away. That's one of the health stories. It's just a clarification. There are a lot of things you can do once you get started. The Denso grant will go away. It's not going to be there forever. So, this is, there is a time issue here.
Who dealt with the Denso grant? Who knows?
Ms. Caroline.
Randy and I talked to them, and it is, that just for this project at this timeframe, and they would want their money back after a period of time.
So, they made that agreement with you?
Yeah. I mean, that was their conditions when they gave them, they approved our request.
So, was that solidified with anybody else, or was it just verbal, or was it writing?
I think Erv dealt with it when it actually came in. I don't know if he's still here.
I can verify that that's true, because I met with them over the other issues regarding the militia, and they reinforced that.
Erv set up the face.
But, no, Mr. Ficassi.
Get me here, Erv first, come in. I was notified regarding the Denso grant that they had certain, within a one week, that basically was at the end of their calendar year or the end of their fiscal year, that they had to donate this money right away, and we had a special account for them. Within, there was no written documentation that I'm aware of regarding this. They just wanted to have a separate bank account, interest-bearing bank accounts set up for this money to be received, and that was, it was designated for, for the Carpenter Lake project.
If it moves forward now.
But they had a rush to get it done before they ended their fiscal year.
That's not, that's not.
No, because there was no written agreement. We had the money, we received the money. We received the money, we have it, we have it in a separate bank account, and they insisted on it being interest-bearing and being separate and not coming with the other.
When was it this full year?
Uh, this, I believe it was true.
So, it hasn't been used by one?
There was no clear distinction to me at all. Or we were told was, set up a separate bank account.
But they gave, this had to be used with, I think it was within one year, wasn't it, Mary?
I mean, yeah, that's the inference that we were going to move forward at this time, and if we're not moving forward, that we would give it back.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I have heard that Denso is coming, we're not getting things free here now. They're coming to us through a multimillion-dollar tax abatement. They know what they're doing. They gave you the $150,000, but they're going to ask for 15 million, I understand, or 20 million.
We have to speak to the city administration or planning regarding that it hasn't come across to me yet for any concrete numbers yet.
Nothing, it's not.
But I know that there are expansion plans for Denso.
I would say from a technical perspective, I could refer the attorney on us, but I think that donation should come before council. We just give donations.
Very good.
I don't know, I guess I'd be a clarification. Acceptable donation of, of the council item. I'd see if they're there at this point. The money is there, it's in hand, and they had a, they had a year-end kind of, obviously they have some sort of contributing that they do, and this is money that they decide to send their way.
They also wanted to move ahead with other, helping us with other fundraising, aside from the tax abatement. They have a long history of working on the ruse and that thing. So, they, you know, they are good corporate citizens.
They are going to get the million, multimillion dollar tax. That subject's not at the table, but it will be.
But the thing of it is, Denso gives, Denso gives the two kinds, gives the two things. Denso gives the two things, it gives for technical engineering with LTU and other universities, and they give environmental projects. And they've done this within a year, and this was one of those.
That may turn out to be a conflict.
Well, that's, those are the things that they give.
We did approach them first, kind of before the millage kind of came up, and it just kind of had, all came to fruition right around the time of the millage. But we approached them just because of their history on the river. Oh, sure, I'm saying anything about that.
I just wanted to, I guess we've got to make a decision tonight. But when you talk about there's, does the carbon still attack? I know that you and who was the friend went up and talked to them, and they said.
For the extension.
For the extension. And they questioned if we don't do it now. But again, to say that you can apply again for the $300,000 and get all these corporate things and do all these other things, right? I still say we should have a sense of what Parks and Rec is doing and planning and committed for these other things that need to be fixed. I'm looking for the win-win here. I would love to have a specific one, but it's just so many unanswered questions, and they say we've got to do it now, we've got to do it now.
Well, we lose a lot of, can I have, can I have, we do lose a lot of money. To do, to start. To do, to start a project, to say that we've got the grant, we're starting forward, it's easier to get grants once we've started. It really is. And I don't mean grants, but I mean corporate donations, as much as we hear you say. But to say that we've lost the grant, no, we're not going to do it.
What about the construction period? Because now we're really going to freeze in the ground.
Tight. Yeah.
But it can't be done.
As I said in my transmittal, we have consulted with the architects, and if we start right away with the bid, it can get done, there's delay. But it's tight, no matter how you...
So, what if we don't make it? Because the constructive get, are we not built, we're not going to be...
Well, my understanding is, but, and again, we need clarification on this. Substantial completion, we'll get the grant, is that what you're saying? Let's carry on. That's what you, that's what...
Yeah, we want to get the grant, we want to get our scope items done, you know, we won't...
What's that mean?
That means the building, the amphitheater, the walkways, you know, these things that we've committed to. And we want to make our, you know, we have a million dollar of grant and match, and then we can have some additional expenses that'll go on beyond that date of August first, because we're open man. But we're still going to aim for that August first date.
Worst-case scenario, we have bad weather, some other thing going wrong, and let's say we get more than half done, what happens?
I would be very uncomfortable with that.
So, we've got to be pretty close to done.
Yeah.
It's tight.
Well, people have said that we can do it, so...
Who says?
Who's the architect? We start tomorrow.
To go for the best project.
It's an aggressive schedule. The building's been designed to easily allow for construction, dream winter, and that's to our favor.
I have another question, Bill.
It wasn't my intention to speak tonight, but I felt the need. My name is Roy Vowell, I live at 28618 Spring Arbor in Southfield. I know I've spoken with most of the council and other members of the staff, and I know that some of you have been out there. I actually seen Runlan and her family one Sunday afternoon, when I was walking out there. I go out there almost every weekend during the spring, summer, and fall months. And, as luck would have it, or not, the project, the Carpenter Center Nature Preserve was completed at about the same time that I had some health problems, and I started actually exercising for a living, instead of going to meetings all the time. And I found that not only did I learn to re-appreciate my childhood in walking in the woods, as I did a lot as a child, growing up and on a farm, but Carpenter Lake is an absolutely amazing place to exercise if you need to exercise. It's also a great place to exercise if you don't need to exercise. But, what I've noticed is the number of people there, somebody told me the other day that they didn't think, pardon anybody, used it. If you drive by there, you won't necessarily see very many cars. I count the cars every time I go out there, which is usually on a Saturday or Sunday, not twice during the week, usually on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon. And there aren't necessarily a lot of cars there. The parking lot's not full, but there's usually anywhere from eight to twenty cars in the parking lot. And some of them don't stay very long. You may go, you may drive by or go there, and there won't be but two or three cars. Five minutes later, there'll be twenty cars. People come and go there. It's not a meeting place, it's not like coming to a council meeting, where you've got fifty people sitting here. People come in and leave, come in and leave. There's a lot of people that go out there during the summer months particularly, with their children, to teach them how to fish. There's more lion and bobbers and so forth in the trees than there are anything else, I think. But that's the way kids learn how to fish. It's a long thing seeing adults put up there. The only reason I mention this is to let you know that people do use it, and I talk to them. Most of them, almost all of them that I talk to are residents in Southfield. I was talking to one about ten days ago when I was there. I didn't go this past weekend, because I had to rake leaves in my yard. And then Sunday, it was nice and windy, so I threw them all back in the yard. And which is another reason I didn't go to Carpenter Lake, because I might have blown into the lake. But, the place is intensely used by the residents of Southfield. A gentleman that I was speaking to about ten days ago told me that this Carpenter Lake was one of the best things that the city of Southfield has ever done, in his opinion. And he said, I was raised in the mountainous area of O'Val, and I've been up here for twenty years, and been looking for something like this. And so, don't be misled by anybody to tell you the Carpenter Lake area is not used. It's kind of noteworthy to me that, trust me, a year and a half ago, March of two thousand and ten, this council unanimously supported moving forward with this idea of the nature It's amazing to me that I've heard said repeatedly at this meeting tonight, that things have changed. Well, they haven't changed in a year and a half. We knew exactly a year and a half. We knew then what we know now. Everything that we thought would happen has happened. The economy hasn't gotten better, it's gotten worse. And it's going to continue to get worse, and not getting better for at least another five years. We knew that a year and a half ago. We know it now. It's still true. And it's still, it's not going to improve a lot.
That was serious.
Thank you. And to say we're not going to do something that we were adamant about a year and a half ago, is just appalling to me. It proves to me something that I observed by attending DVA meetings, when it was actually called the DVA, the Downtown Development Authority in Southfield, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when it first started. And they would make a decision one month, the next month they would change that decision. They'd make a decision the next month, and they would change that decision. Is that what council is becoming?
I want to ask you a question on the grant, because I did go up to Lansing with Mr. Jordan, with Ms. Karlock, and with Bill Zagman. And the reason I went was because I know the history of this project. It's not my project, but I know the history of it, because at the time, we had a group called the Southfield Woodlands Preservation Council, when I was the president, and I was involved in discussions with Judge Clarkson and Judy Weiser on the purchase of the property, at the request of residents. So, I had, I knew the history of it, and my, the reason that I wanted to have a group go, is because they really didn't want to extend the grant. I mean, they said pretty much, we haven't been able to do it, we're going to withdraw it. And these were new people that didn't know it. The people that had been there before would have given us an extension, because we have such a perfect record with this grant, and Ms. Karlock can tell you that. But they completely changed over the people, these were all new people that came in, and they didn't care. They didn't know us, they really didn't. We spent, I'd say probably forty-five minutes to an hour, talking about, I was talking about the history. I wanted them to know the story of our city, what we have done, what this whole process was. And in the end of us all talking about what we knew, and I gave them a lot of background, so they really had a feeling of who we are, we've always kept our word, we've always performed every grant. They said, well, we'll take a look at it, we'll have to go, they had to go through two other agencies. And it took weeks before we knew, but they honestly, talking to them like that, letting them know how much people wanted this, and what our history had been, they gave us a break. We were in a way surprised, we were in a way surprised that they said, okay, we got approval. Because there's three groups that had to be, had to weigh in on this. Their budget department, it was not a simple process. They didn't just say, well, you came up here, we'll give it to you. It was a very expensive, involved process, we had to fight for it. And I'm saying this, that people are thinking, you need to go out and get another grant, not from this source. There aren't grants for this type of thing. It's very, very selective and very narrow. It's about land and water trust fund, it's for land, or it's for buildings that relate to land and water trust fund guidelines, so.
I was hearing about this, you know, when...
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
I was here then with Fox, and Judy Weiser, and Fiona Weiser, owned that piece of land, and they offered it to us for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We applied to a grant, got the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and our city sent it back. Then, in the future, a little while after, cost us a million dollars to buy back the land, to buy back, we made a deal with the developer and everything, but it cost a million bucks, because they sent back the two hundred and fifty dollars then. That's the true story. So, we're lucky we had it for a million bucks.
Yes, let me try to address the things that have been raised by the mayor, and the mayor, and some of the concerns that we've talked about with the facilities that we currently have. I guess, we share, have to share the blame with the Parks and Recreation for not pushing them to get those things fixed. I mean, it's not a matter of money, it's a matter of just doing it. There's always been money there, they have their own funding, and, you know, I always say, you know, you let things deteriorate, it costs you more, the more you let it deteriorate, and that's what's happened. I mean, if you look at the meeting rooms upstairs, and I don't know, all of us have meetings up there, and we keep joking about, at one time, there were commission blinds there, called commission blind. They're all broken and half-done, and it looked like a piece of junk, and same way it fits with. And I told Waterhouse, I said, get those blinds and throw them away, and it's better not looking at a window than these dilapidated blinds. And, you know, the kids do that. Well, they don't have those. You know, I mean, it's easy, it's simple, you know. But anyway, I think that the blame lies partially on us, that we have not asked what Tim had asked for. Hey, give me your shopping list, what has to be done, and tell us how you're going to budget for it. And Jim and I have talked this, and if you come up with an amount of money, it's easy to buy for these repairs and get it done. We can start tomorrow. As far as the, is the weight putting put on the Parks and Recreation to watch over this building, you know, I understand from Jim, and I just confirmed it with Jim, the building authorities, like the library, are going to be responsible for the construction and the completion of this project. So, I guess, I guess, I just think that, you know, coming from, you know, the grocery business, all kinds of businesses, I know that the biggest thing is, is looking at the product we have to sell to both our business community and our residents. And I think that our product is really suffering, because we have not done anything to change the way you look at the city, from a perspective of marketing. I mean, if you go into a grocery store, and I kind of, I didn't mean to put it this way, but, you know, I go to Jim's Kroger up here, I go to Jim's Kroger up here, and I laugh at them, because I said, Jim, they don't do anything up there. I mean, it is the same old way, it's, the produce department is dirty, and that's the way it's going to be, and the asphalt's going to be un-repaired, because that's the way they run the shopping center. And I said, I go up to fifteen Mile of the Los Chamos. And I said, how about Jim menu? I mean, I can even have lunch up there, and if I have lunch up there, I mean, they got a restaurant inside there. And you can go through a cafeteria, you can buy any kind of food, lobster, anything you want. And it's clean, it's neat. I've seen a guy with even a stick with a tennis ball on the end, and he's over there knocking out the marks on the floor. You know, the bottle thing is so clean and neat, it's a little building on the side, you don't have to step in beer and pop and slush. I mean, you know, but that's, that's the kind of impression people get, when you see things starting to deteriorate. And yes, those are just the facilities over there, yeah, it's an embarrassment, it is. And, but there's no reason for it. I mean, you can't say, you know, that, oh, we didn't have the money for it. It's just that nobody addressed it. I mean, you don't have the money to put drywall in the meeting rooms upstairs. I mean, that's a simple way to make it look accommodating, and fresh, painting, carpeting, I mean, these kinds of things ought to be scheduled on a routine basis, just like the office buildings work. You know, you set a scale, the carpeting lasts so long, so you put money inside for carpeting. You need trim work done, you set aside for that, roof needs so much, set up much for that. You have a schedule to follow. What we have done is we haven't done that. And so, yeah, you sit here today, and looking at, and blaming this request, because we are familiar with that, and it doesn't work with me. I mean, I think we have to continue to work on our product that we are selling to the public. And this, to me, would absolutely change a lot of residents' viewpoint of what we have for our families and residents. And, you know, we got, what, sixteen hundred vacant homes here, you've got to market those. I mean, what a, what a sales promotion thing you have, that we have a place for families to go. You know, what a product it is for our schools to say, hey, you know, we can bus these kids over there, and they can be, you know, see other things other than classroom walls. There's a lot of things and advantages of this city, and, you know, I'm not trying to sell it, I didn't mean to, but I'm getting more and more feeling that we are going to really miss the boat, and it's, and, you know, Jeremy Smallkin, I believe what he said, he was at the meeting, and I'm glad he was there. But, at the same time, it's not three hundred thousand, it's a million two, a million two. I mean, all these other things that people have put up, if this thing goes, it's going to be at risk. And it shouldn't be, you know, that you jump at it because you're afraid of losing the money. You have to look at, are you missing an opportunity? And I think that we would miss a great opportunity if we fail for this. As far as the money that is being spent for other needs in the city, Parks and Recreation, those are their parts. And, you know, the Parks and Recreation Board, Mayor, they ought to be looking at those facilities like we do, you know, like yours expanding, and say, hey, you know, let's start getting busy, just start a social group, you know, we just can't pay off all the time, let's go and look at what our needs are, and figure out how we're going to pay for it, and get things going. I just think that it's an excuse not to go forward with this. And I'm a hundred percent for it myself, and I am no concerned at all that it's going to be funds to pay for this. I think there's a lot of challenges, absolutely. But I don't want us to use the excuse, well, we're not going to give it to police and fire, because, you know, we've got this money staying worth. Police and fire, we don't have a need for trucks. I mean, anything they need, we have got grants for, we have provided, you know, they're not hurting. Police Department, they passed just recently, they fixed their shooting range, I mean, if something comes to the city's council, to fix, we fix it. And the members said we don't have the money to do it. Thank God we don't, we have to see that. But, we are a strong city, we are a strong city, we've always been a strong city, we've been a very progressive city, I think we've got to really continue to be that way.
No, thank you, no. I want to add something that sort of tickle anything, because it wasn't just staff that wanted to go. We asked, Fred and I pulled the council to find out whether you wanted to reserve a grant before we went. I spoke to Lenny, I think Ted spoke to Don, and I think Ken. There were five people that said, we want to save the grant, so go and try to save the grant. Two said, we do have to...
No, nobody asked me, let me clarify, nobody asked me.
Five, no, all right, well, anyway, we still had, we had a majority, we had a weak support. But we had two concerns about operations, I think one was from Ken, some concern about the operation cost. But the majority of council said, go, try to save the grant. So it wasn't, you know, if it comes from staff, then it comes from one person, that's why we needed to vote. Anyway, I think it's time to make, put names in the voting.
Okay, thank you. Perception. I think no one is disagreeing that it is not an absolutely beautiful project and that half of their life is not beautiful. It's just the timing of this project isn't right, isn't wrong. We just went out for a no vote election. And I asked those bodies, where are we going as a city? We have not sat down, reached a millage, to list any of our priorities. In fact, personally, I think our priorities are messed up at this point. We keep hearing that we're going to have to get smaller, we don't have the money, we don't know where we're going to be in a few more years, we have to keep downsizing. We can't keep downsizing too much more, and things are not going to get better. The dollars are dwindling, we need money set aside for the emergency and the rainy day sun. We cannot continue doing business the way that we are. And it's that this body hasn't even sat down since the election to say, where are the priorities, where are we going as a city? And as someone who's lived here all my life, I'm very concerned for our future. I'm very, very concerned for our future. And I hope whatever way you go, that, you know, this project will succeed. You heard our Parks and Recreation Director at the Finance Committee meeting say, our department has to get smaller. They're questioning whether they have to get out of the field zone. The golf courses are losing money. You know, the buildings in our roads are crumbling. How many years have we talked about a zero-deep pool? I want to say ten, maybe twelve, we still haven't done anything. The children's area is falling apart, crumbling. We keep talking about the pavilion. Oh, we can make so much money, revenue. We don't even have a kitchen to support it. At one time, we had a beautiful plan for Parks and Recreation, the kitchen area. I can't even remember what happened, but that went by the wayside. I know the mayor mentioned the burr. We've got opportunity there, but there's no kitchen. So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm really concerned, where are we going as a city? Thank you.
Well, I don't share your worry. I feel very confident in my city because I think we're going to, we always try to be patient. And I know, I think they all know that you're not in favor of this project, but...
It's not the project, no, it's the timing, it's the timing, and the dollars.
Well, the timing, it's now or never. It really is now or never. If we don't do this now, it's never going to get done because it won't be possible.
Let me just say this, you know, you talked to me and you said the same thing and said that the finance, but let me just say this to you. That it isn't, it isn't that the city hasn't got plans. I think that each, each person that's heading up their department has certain ideas of what has to be done. I just feel very strongly that what's happened is, and I hate to do that, but the previous Director of Parks and Rec, you know, felt very uncomfortable coming to council, almost intimidated because council, I guess, would ask questions and couldn't get answers. But I think that every department can adjust. I mean, that's why you have head of departments. I mean, they're the ones who are supposed to, I mean, nobody goes to your department and says, you know, whatever, let's set up a whole new election process. Your department head, you head up your department, you get the elections going. Well, that's the same thing as any other department. Doesn't it be planning, or police department, fire department? You know, that's why you have department heads, that's why you have people in authority to run their departments. When budget time comes, I mean, Jim, about three sheets to us. These are the three scenarios. Millage is very, very plain, why would they for Millage? Because forty million dollars, forty-one million dollars of our general fund go to public safety. And one scenario we showed was if we don't get some help for public safety, that we're going to have to cut half the departments up. That's what the pink sheet showed. So we went for the Millage. We did not expect another eleven percent home values to drop, or that maybe the fields and the others. But that at least we had a financial plan and knew what the outcome would be if each scenario didn't come about. And these have been corrected as time went on. And as challenges come on, those figures are changed. But in no way do I really feel that this city, you know, and I told Jim the other day, if you look at what the other cities are doing, you know, this building is obsolete. In other words, in other words, I went into Sterling Heights, and they have one counter now, and your people would be with all the other clerical people. And all the clerical people are being trained, whether that person went up to the counter or for whatever reason, anybody, if you look at the building right now, you've got engineering upstairs, planning upstairs, you got, you got building downstairs. I mean, that ought to have been on one floor, one counter, shared clerical, and small offices for the department heads. And that's all you really need. But what we're running into when you say you're two hundred people short is that because you have to have somebody stationed in all these wasted spaces that we have that don't, that don't correlate with any other piece of ground you have. And, you know, I mean, I don't remember the architect that said, you know, we should tear this building down and build another one. Because this building is not meeting the demands, I mean, the heating and the cooling, whatever. And I'm not suggesting we tear it down, but I'm just trying to say to you that everybody is putting out, every employee is putting out, putting up with this building that is not a building that you can get the most efficiency out of your employees. And so, but that is not to stop us from going forward because unless you tear the building down and make that the high priority, you know, you're not going to do that. I don't know when it's going to happen, but that eventually, I see that this building either is going to be used for something else, and another building is going to be replacing it. And it will be built to satisfy the size of the city you're going to have. And, but, you know, but that, like I said, but we have a product that we have to sell and market. And this thing will help us market the city, and it will enhance the product we have. And I know what you're saying, and I'm well aware of it. Jim and I talk about this constantly. I mean, is it like nobody's listening, and nobody's caring, or there's no input? It's just that you're dealing with a serious problem in that you only got so many things, places you can put people to get the efficiency factor. So, you know, so until that is really addressed, it'll have situations like we have today.
You know, we spent two and a half hours on this, I think, for them to vote on it. I'm going to go on the table, and Don, I'll start with you.
We need a roll ten.
We need a roll ten, all right, I need a...
I'll go with a roll ten.
A motion by Mr. McCaskey, supported by Ms. Taylor, to do a roll ten.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Allies? You're looking here. Now, we need to vote on whether to...
Do you have a recommended resolution?
Oh, yes, to adopt...
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McCarroll.
The blue sheet that was passed out with the recommended resolution, I approve it as it was submitted to us this evening.
And that's the proposal that's on the table, and that's your voting, yes. So, your vote is yes?
Oh, that was a motion, I think.
That's a motion to...
To approve.
And who supports it? Ms. Taylor, a motion by Mr. McCaskey, for Ms. Taylor to approve the recommend, the resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Roll call, get a roll call.
All right, let's do a roll call. Ms. Thang, just do a roll call, please. Mr. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Leon?
I'm not against the project, I say no.
Mr. McCaskey?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
We have three in favor and two against on the motion. Three, nine.
Can I make a, before a motion also before you say two? I'd like to address what the mayor brought up and Ken brought up. And that is that we ask the city administrator to review the Parks and Recreation Department, and get them to review their facilities and make recommendations back to this back.
Want to make that a motion?
Well, I think you can do that, this is...
You can do that direction.
I will.
You direct it to the city, I think, I'll just...
I will do that.
And what I want to say is that there was a lot of time, and I, I would like to challenge the staff how much time was put into adding to our existing workforce, adding additional money to the budget for Parks and Rec, that we have as much passion about ensuring that anyone that walks into any of our facilities have an experience that is one, that is first class. All of us have walked around, like you said, Don, shame on us, shame on us. If we could spend two and a half hours to add on to our budget, to add on to our staffing, and I can tell you, to get additional staffing in this city is almost an act of God. And we just voted to add staffing. We just voted to build a new building and add to our existing cleaning and staffing and to social health that we're reducing staff. Two things, we need an organizational chart that this body, that this council can say, this is the way the city itself will be ran and staffed. And we don't have that now. It has gone too long that we're, just people disappear, and we just keep walking down the same lane. This council, with your ability to approve what the city looks like, need to have something that you are supporting and have approved. And we don't have that. And to say that we take some single act, and spend all this staff time running up the lampings, and everybody's getting money from the community, and we're all embracing it, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I'm saying we need to spread this energy and this focus on the entire city operation. And we need to fix our existing structure so we're not embarrassed to people listening. We're going to be real happy when we cut the ribbon, just like we worked for that library. We had a lot of discussion about that. Was it a Taj Mahal, was it this great city? Yes, it is. But we're still sitting here in this building and having touch. So I just have that to say. And I really don't need a commentary, I'm just giving a lot of...
No, I'm just saying that we went through some of the things, and I had our group involved.
I hope that, as I said, I support the project. I just don't think it's now, or I need a little more time on this. But nonetheless, we're moving forward. I hope that the action tonight does not negate that we're going to go and look for additional grant money or corporate donations so that we don't have to take nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand out of the lurks.
I agree.
So I hope this isn't the end of it. You know, because we said, okay, we're going to go with this plan, and we can turn our attention to something else and just ride on the lurk.
No, that's not, I have nothing to do with it.
And Joan, that's my biggest concern, and I haven't gotten it satisfied. We're going into the winter season, and we know we've had project after project that has been delayed, and God help us, the building, the building committee or whoever did the fire station. Now, if we do not meet that timeline, what happens? Do we, are we automatically obligated to the lurk? That is my question. If we don't meet that timeline that is mandated according to it, just like it said, you have to approve this by a certain date, it said you have to have it built by a certain date. It didn't say the fact of the...
Well, I mean, you don't...
It didn't say the fact of the, that is my major concern. And I don't want it to be like, we usually, it's twenty-four hours, and we've got to make a decision tonight. We should know early enough if we're not going to make this building deadline. Because that is a major hit to our lurk plan. And if we're not going to get this grant, we need to know it. And it shouldn't be somebody sitting around hoping it's going to happen.
If we're not going to get the grant?
Because you don't get the grant until the building is finished.
Oh, no, we've been assured it can be done, and we're sure it can happen.
Joan, we built too many things, the shamses don't mean anything to me. I want this, I want administration to be very clear, we should get updates, and this should not be a twenty-four hour called special meeting, guess what, we're not going to make it, we've got to go on through the lurk plan. And I'm telling you. Joan, you're not building it. Say to you, make sure it's not happening.
I, I have complete confidence.
You're not building it. I, I...
Looking here, Joan.
I believe in fact, I believe in truth.
Do our architects hear this?
Yes, you hear this. And if you can't do it, you better be real, you better be honest.
I don't want doors hung the last day.
But we have, we have one more item on the... And that is a discussion of all of this. If you want to...
Red, fire up, fire up.
Yes, they've got to come, they've got to...
They're going to do a straw vote for the two new councils.
I told, I told the chairman, we should have had a special meeting on this.
It's like six quarters.
Do you want to postpone, or are you ready?
Well, I thought we'd postpone it, and then you'd have a special meeting. I don't want it the last day, I don't want Susan Goldstein to... I mean, I think you should maybe take the time, come in and...
The tennis court.
What you have to get out, who you think, Jeremy.
Do you want to do that inauguration?
No, I don't, no, no, no. We have a little history.
Yeah.
We do a straw vote, and whatever comes out, that's it. And everybody on that night, man of seats, whatever is coming.
I have a question with that. Who would run the meeting next week then?
Myron Fraser would, and then he gives up his seat to the newly incoming president.
Straw vote is done informally like here, and then it becomes formalized at the...
We have enough people to have a straw vote. I didn't realize.
We have six, five, six, six.
More than four.
Well, it's the will of the council, if you want to do it now.
I mean, you point out under the charter that you are required to elect a council president at your next meeting.
Right, which is the inauguration.
Correct, and after that. So, whatever you want to do, we know, and I think your discretion, that night you must elect a council president.
Ms. Myron come in then.
Tomorrow?
Is Miley coming back tomorrow?
No.
Could this body get together with a special meeting this week?
I could do it Wednesday, I can't do it tomorrow night.
That's what.
Thursday, or Thursday? I'll agree, we'll do it tonight. Nancy, we got to, we set up with the ballot?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we, um, wanna nominate, what, where do I check? We start the nomination?
Well, I think you should take the nomination.
And then once they're closed, we can announce.
Okay, take a nomination for-
Okay, I nominate, so.
The nomination for president?
For president, I nominate, so.
Do you require a second?
No.
No.
The other nomination?
I'm gonna be jumping.
The other nomination?
I need that nomination to be closed.
You, uh, report that. Um, Nancy, would you hand out the ballot?
And remember, council, oh, well, you're all gonna go at the same time, so you have to put your name on the ballot.
Right, you have to sign it out.
Somebody that way.
You just need, you need to put your name on the ballot.
I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's okay to say that, it's okay to say that.
All right.
Okay, so, all right.
So the, you have any thoughts in bringing the one right now? Report that. This is council president is one with three, two.
Okay, we have, um, Joan Seymour voting for Joan Seymour, Bodie Jordan voting for Joan Seymour. Sid Lance voting for Ken Cybert. Ken Cybert voting for Ken Cybert. Now for Paccasi, voting for Joan Seymour, and Jeremy Moss for Ken Cybert. So we have a three-three. Three votes, we vote for Joan Seymour and three votes for Ken Cybert.
We need to wait for-
Yeah, I guess that's-
Well, you'll take your formal vote next Monday.
Right, we'll take the formal vote next Monday. All right, and let's, uh, motion for, um-
I move Ken Cybert being, you know, for, for the president. All right, fine. I, um, move, um, Sid Lance for council president for Ken.
For Ken. Any other nominations for Ken?
I'll nominate myself, I'll perform myself.
Nothing from you, Laura's been nominated in seconds, let's vote.
Who's, 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 who's the nomination?
Oh, wait a minute, if there's no, there's no-
Wait, there's no, is there no way for the president?
Well, if there's only one, then it's, uh, I guess you have.
You can go by a nomination. First again, a formal vote again.
Right, all right.
Straw vote, you've shown your chances.
Right. I guess that's it. Uh, is there any other business to come beside the council?
I have one question. We, we received a letter from a friend, well, I, I don't either, I have it, I'll give a call tomorrow.
We weren't building a shopping mall.
Oh, I see.
And he's mixed up, Bill Berkeley.
I'll find out what you did, I have the copy of it, it's kind of mysterious.
Is it Rupert, or is it him?
Okay, if there's any other business, if we're for this council, there is, um, is anyone?